Good evening and welcome to the June 23rd, 2025 Council Meeting. I will now call the meeting to order. Councilwoman Steele, will you do the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I can go with your heart and repeat after me. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
City Clerk, will you please take role?
Councilmember Calmick.
Here.
Councilmember Seneca.
Here.
Councilmember Wong.
Here.
Mayor Protem Still.
Here.
And Mayor Landau.
Here.
All present.
Thank you. Okay. Today, it is my honor, first of all, this is presentation, some recognitions. Today is my honor to pay tribute to Virginia B. Haley. Her family's roots in Seal Beach run deep. Her father served as a Seal Beach City Councilman from 1926 to 1930. When he passed, the city recognized his service with a proclamation, and now it is our privilege to continue that legacy by presenting a proclamation in Virginia's honor, which will be accepted by her grandson, Tim. Virginia first came to Seal Beach in 1922 at the age of five, holding the distinction of being Seal Beach's longest living resident. For more than a century, she was a beloved thread in the fabric of the community she proudly called home. With her vivid memories, Virginia was a living encyclopedia of Seal Beach history. She told stories of a bygone era, from the days of seedy gambling halls and houses of ill repute, to the joys on beachfront amusement park, silent films before the talkies, rides on the red car and trolley, and dancing at the Jewel Cafe dance hall. Virginia was so much more than our longest living resident at 108 years old. At her 100th birthday, she made the honorary matriarch of Seal Beach. She was the heart of our community, who through her kindness and generosity and tireless volunteerism, helped shape Seal Beach into the special place we know and love today. Her spirit of service was unmatched. I truly believe she was a spark that inspired generations of volunteers. In many ways, Virginia helped lay the foundation for Seal Beach's strong culture of volunteerism, which continues to thrive today and defines who we are as a city. Virginia's life reminds us of the importance of faith, family, and deep love for one's hometown. Her dedication and contributions to Seal Beach made a lasting impact on many. She was founder and president of the Seal Beach Junior Women's Club, president of Seal Beach PTA, president of the Seal Beach Girl Scouts, leader of the Anaheim Landing California Historical Landmark, and a faithful member of First United Methodist Church. Virginia's loving presence will be deeply missed, but her legacy lives on in the stories told. Lives she's touched, every act of kindness, every neighbor who lends a hand, and in the strong sense of community that defines Seal Beach. We thank her for her years of dedication, and we will forever hold her memory close to our hearts. Now, therefore, I Lisa Landau, Mayor of the City of Seal Beach and members of the City Council, do hereby honor Virginia Haley's long life, prosperity, and the many contributions to our community. Tim, would you like to come to the podium? Would you like to say a couple words?
I would. Thank you, Mayor and City Council. Nice to see all folks all again. Grandma was awesome, and she really enjoyed this town, and she would repeat, she would get asked often how much, she could have moved anywhere over the last several decades of living, and she always said, "No, Seal Beach is home, and it's where I want to be, and it's because of the people." And she did some traveling in her life, so she always enjoyed coming back. So, thank you for your greatness, and I appreciate the support today. Thank you.
Very well deserved.
You're welcome. Thank you.
There's a, Deb, can you hand him the proclamation? And then, Tim, can you come up here, behind the dais? And Chief and Chief, can you join us in the picture? The Haley family was a huge part of Seal Beach.
Thank you.
Do you want us?
Yeah.
I know. I'll be. Go on. Let's have the, if you balance this out.
Here, go ahead. No.
Hey, Madam Mayor.
Are you ready?
Okay.
You're not in there.
Okay.
All who are 108 years old or older stand up. Yeah.
Great. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you.
Thank you.
Stand the whole time. Okay. Now, we have the Coyote Management Presentation. Police Captain Nick Nicholas, can you please come to the podium?
Tonight, I have the honor of welcoming a local success story who has gone on to earn an international reputation for his work in wildlife science. Dr. Sted Stankewich, professor of biological sciences and the director of the Mammal Lab at the Cal State University Long Beach.
Oh, good. I always take issue with this. I'm a proud Titan. I hope you don't mind, Professor. Dr. Stankewich, his journey began right here in Orange County. He grew up in Whittier and La Habra, and graduated as valedictorian from La Habra High School in 1996. He then crossed the country to earn his bachelor's degree in biology from Cornell University before returning to California for a PhD in animal behavior at UC Davis. After completing his doctorate, Dr. Stankewich spent six intensive years in postdoctoral research and teaching at the University of Massachusetts, Amherst, and Harvard University, sharpening his focus on how mammals adapt and survive in changing environments. For the past 13 years, he's served at Cal State Long Beach, where he directs the Mammal Lab and leads groundbreaking studies on urban carnivore behavior and the predator-prey interactions that shape life in our own backyards. His work not only advances science, but also helps cities like ours craft evidence-based wildlife and public safety policies. Please join me in welcoming Dr. Stankewich. Thank you.
Hi, everyone. It's a pleasure to be here. Thank you for the invitation. Yeah, so I'm just up the road at Cal State Long Beach, and our research spans a wide range of types of topics, from predator-prey behavior, evolution, ecology, a lot of what we've done in the last, especially seven or eight years, is urban ecology. How do animals, all types of mammals, respond to changing urban environments, artificial light, urban heat islands, changing predator regimes, that kind of thing. So, there we go. So, with respect to coyotes, that's what we're here for, obviously, they're everywhere. In North America, or in the U.S., they've now made it into every major metropolitan area in the country. I think New York City was the last one, Manhattan, that they finally made it over the bridge into Manhattan. And they are the most prevalent predator in urban areas all over the country. Obviously, there's differences between wild and urbanized forms, and I'll talk about how that presents itself later on. Our focus in my lab is to learn about how coyotes perceive their environment, how they learn about their natural prey, and how we can use this knowledge to reduce the conflict between humans and our pets and the coyotes. So, in order to do that, we do three major things. First, there's wildlife monitoring, passive monitoring with trail cameras. We'll talk about that. We've done a number of behavioral studies using captive coyotes and wild coyotes as well. And we do behavioral studies of prey behavior as well, to see how they respond to coyotes. So, for the last eight years now, we've been part of the Urban Wildlife Information Network. We currently have 42 cameras all over Orange County. On the sites, you can see on the screen, our original sites were in, let's see, where's my pointer? The urban sites up near Disneyland and Angel Stadium. We have semi-urban sites here in yellow, up in the hills of Orange, and then we have about a dozen rural sites in the Santa Ana Mountains, all in a transect from urban to rural. And this Urban Wildlife Information Network, there's now 60 partners all over the world that have the same type of experiment in their areas. There's four of these transects in the LA metropolitan area. And we also have cameras now in the Bolschica wetlands, and a couple here in Seal Beach. There's, there we go. So here's Seal Beach, and our two cameras right now are in Los Cerritos Wetlands, although we have another experiment going on in the Wildlife Refuge as well, with cameras that are not part of that project. Each camera is maintained by graduate students and undergrads. It's a passive motion-activated camera. We put it on a steel post. It's encased in steel in a lock. They get vandalized all the time. We lose two, three cameras a year at least. We just lost one in our last deployment. They get deployed four times a year for a month, one month each season, and we get all sorts of stuff on these cameras. Here's a bobcat with a mouse in its mouth, rat, all kinds of cotton-tailed rabbits, of course, cats wandering around our neighborhoods, skunks are everywhere, deer are up in the Santa Ana Mountains. You can get mountain lions out there, too. So we get mountain lions wandering around. But of course, the coyote is one of the most common things we see. Pop up all over the place. They often are kind of goofy. You see the pups playing. So they're one of the most prevalent animals we see in this area. We've done studies looking at their diet, doing scat analysis, where we've gone and ticked up their scat and gone through it and analyzed what they're eating. We found human food items in about 14% of their scats, prey cat bones in about 14%, which is almost double what we see in a lot of other areas. We do a lot of behavioral experiments, where we put out models of prey. These are skunk pelts that have been dyed or not dyed with some food on the back, seeing how the coyotes respond to things that have the skunk odor or not. We've done experiments, this one's on a captive colony in Utah, where we train them to not attack skunks by being able to spray them with skunk models. Here's the video here, where we put out these prey models, these skunk models, and there's a remote-controlled sprayer in the back, and this animal is wandering up close, and he's going to get sprayed in the face with skunk oil. And there, he got sprayed. One time, learning never again attacked a skunk model. So, we've learned that these animals are super variable in their behavior and how bold they are. We can go to the next slide. And we've even explored their, how they respond to different patterns and colors, and trying to work that out. We're now moving into talking about how we can use aversive learning to reduce human wildlife conflict with our pets. We, in the past, have done a large nationwide survey of pet owners to ask them about their pets' experiences with coyotes, asking about their dog and their cat breed, size, coloration, how much time you spend outdoors, and what sort of interactions have they had with coyotes. We found that cats that spend more time outdoors are more likely to have negative encounters. That makes perfect sense. But no effect with that in dogs. Smaller dogs are clearly at a higher risk of being attacked by a coyote. But most interesting to us, in my world, dogs with more contrasting colors, more black and white in their coat, are less affected by coyotes. We think there's a generalization from their fear of skunks to, hey, is that small little yappy dog a skunk? Or, you know, so it might be, you might gain some protection from being black and white. But coyote in California, here's some of biology, they mate in the early part of the year. That's the one time of the year when large dogs are a little bit more at risk. Their young are born a couple months later. They have one litter per year, five to six pups. They're starting to feed on their own right about now, so you're going to start to probably see more pups out in the world these days. And then they start to leave their parents and go off on their own at six to nine months old. The pairs, stable pairs, can remain together for years. It's really important to have a stable, social, territorial pack, because that will keep the numbers down. In the wild, their main food are small mammals, rabbits, rodents, and squirrels, dead animals, so carrion, fruits and berries. They will eat vegetation, birds, and insects, depending on times of year and their availability. In urban areas, though, their diets switch heavily. They have a large proportion of their diets made up by domestic pets and garbage and pet food, that they still eat a lot of small mammals. So they're also taking thousands of rodents out of your backyards every day, not every day, but every year. So they do a great service to our community in reducing our other types of pets. And they'll still eat the other stuff, too, but garbage and domestic pets, domestic food increases a lot in urban areas. There's never been a formal study of coyotes in Seal Beach, so we don't really know how many are actually here. Typical urban densities are 0.5 to 2.5 coyotes per square mile. Seal Beach is 13 square miles, but more than half of that is natural, sort of undeveloped land where coyotes would love to live. So obviously, the naval weapons base, Los Cerritos, some freeway off-ramps, golf courses. So if you take, if you go to the heavy side of that, my best guess is 30 to 40 animals in the area. But remember, coyotes don't follow boundaries. They don't care about your city lines. So you get animals crossing the border, coming in from Long Beach, Huntington Beach, Westminster. So it's a fluid population. Behavior. So we all know that people vary a lot in their personality, right? I think we all know people who are on the left side of this graph, that are cooperative, quiet, tranquil, easy to get along with. We also probably know a lot of people on the right side of the graph, that are angry, cruel, greedy. Most of us, I think, fall probably somewhere in the middle, right? Very variable in how we behave. Well, coyotes are exactly the same way, in how bold and aggressive they are. In the wild, you have very calm, very timid coyotes that won't go anywhere near things they don't know anything about. You have some that are very aggressive, that are very bold, will inspect new things that they've never seen before. But most fall right here in the middle. And this wild, fearful behavior of humans is very common, and the vast majority of wild coyotes are going to have that natural fear. The problem is that the ones that come into urban areas are not the ones on the far left. They're probably the ones in the middle on the right. Those are the ones that are bold enough to go into an unfamiliar habitat and explore and try to make their home there. And that unfortunately includes that far right side of the curve. So what ends up happening is your curve of urban coyotes is going to be on the bolder side, more aggressive side, just because that's what selection is doing to that population. So, and that also means that you're going to have more of those hyper-bold, hyper-aggressive So they're normally very wary of humans, that's normal behavior, but urban coyotes may show reduced fear of humans. The abundant food we have in our neighborhoods accelerates this process. If they know there's pet food out, they know there's cats wandering the neighborhood, they're going to be more willing to come in and find that food source, especially in a very competitive world of urban life. If they're not harassed, they can become more aggressive, be more willing to take pets more often, be more willing to approach the pet owners. The most aggressive problem animals may even stalk or attack children or pets, or attack pets being locked on a leash. Those are the problem animals. Those are the ones that need to be removed. Since the 1970s, there have been more than 160 attacks in California. Only one fatal attack. It's very, very uncommon for, and I think I only know of one in the last 50 years on an adult, and that was up in Canada, that a coyote killed an adult. There's far more mountain lion attacks than there are deaths than there are coyote attacks. SoCal, for whatever reason, has higher rates of attacks than other areas do. Not quite sure why. We could talk about that. Older studies of more isolated areas show that you need to take out 75% of coyotes annually to control their numbers and to bring them down. And elimination would take decades. I mean, if you've got 30 to 40 animals in Seal Beach, it would take you a long time to reach out and find every single one individual. Poisons and toxins are restricted, and they can hit non-target species, so you'd be likely to kill a lot of feral cats, a lot of squirrels, a lot of other carnivores. Capture and relocation is not legal in California without a very special permit. I've never, I haven't heard of it happening, but for the most part, everything is just capture and kill. So widespread lethal extermination plans, especially if you're taking out the dominant pair in an area, often lead to a younger age structure in these packs. So taking out the dominant pair allows other transient animals to come in, disrupts the social system, that reduces competition in the area. They will increase their litter size, because now there's a new area available to colonize. So in this case, two minus one equals four. Taking away one animal can lead to more animals, unfortunately. And if you take out indiscriminately, take out coyotes indiscriminately off of that red curve I showed you, it's not going to move that curve. There's still going to have bold animals, you're still going to have moderately fearful animals. And you're unlikely to ever rid this area of coyotes entirely, because they're coming in from the outside borders. So what can we do? Well, fences are expensive, they have to be really tall, they have to have roller bars on top, and I'm guessing no one wants to have ugly steel fences all over the place. Strobes and sounds and flagging can help in the short term, but coyotes can habituate to it, that they can get used to it and know that it's not dangerous. However, target removal of the hyper-aggressive problem animals is critical. By doing that, you can first, you can remove the problem animal, take it out immediately. That can often re-instill fear in the rest of the population if they know their top dog has been killed. That might make other animals fearful. And you're also removing the animals from the far right end of that spectrum. That will shift the curve back to the left, back to that normal distribution. So if you only take out the far right side of that curve, you're going to move the curve back in the other direction where it should be. So the current best practices that I've heard of all over the country is through an active public program. And I mean active. It has to be, has to be strong. So negative reinforcement, encouraging hazing of all coyotes to re-instill fear, not just the aggressive ones, all coyotes. Make everyone afraid of humans and keep it up, especially if you have a pack you know is a problem. And you need to enforce the removal of all the attractants, garbage, backyard, pet food, fallen fruits. Areas of backyards who have overgrown trees and shrubs where coyotes can form dens. My next-door neighbor growing up had an overgrown yard. There were coyotes, there was a den in their backyard. I grew up next to one, next-door neighbor. They finally, when the couple died, they did clear out all that stuff out, and the coyotes left. Keep your small pets indoors or enclosed in outdoor kennels. Attacking a cat is normal behavior for a coyote. They're predators, that's what they do in the wild. So that's, so increased attacks on feral cats or roaming cats is, while it's really sad and heartbreaking for owners, it's what coyotes do in the wild. It's not a sign of aggressive behavior. And you need to cite individuals that intentionally feed the animals, people who toss food to them, encourage them to come closer to people. That's making the problem far worse. So I'm happy to answer your questions, but the really issue is trying to knock down that far right side of the red curve, move it back to the middle, and re-instill fear in these animals. And I will also mention, I talked about skunks and coyotes. If anyone has a dog that gets sprayed by skunks a lot, I have magnets with the recipe for how to deodorize your dog. It's not tomato juice, that's an urban myth. So I'm happy to hand these out, so I'm happy to take your questions, though.
I do.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
Okay. How, you talk about fenced proofing.
Yeah.
How tall do those fences need to be, the fencing?
So I've heard from like six and a half to eight feet tall, and even then having roller bars or extra stuff on top of that is important, because they can leap over fences really easily, but having a roller bar on top makes it hard for them to sort of scamper over it. So they have to be not only tall, but make it harder for them to get over that top lid.
Okay. And when you talk about encouraging residents to haze.
Yes.
I assume we're not talking about fraternity haze.
No.
Okay.
No.
Similar. Do you want to describe hazing?
Sure. So hazing would be, I mean, anything you can do to be as aggressive and loud and scary as you possibly can to an animal. You can throw things, spray a hose, noise makers, you know, act like you just don't want this animal around you, even if it's down the street. Just be as loud as you possibly can, and that will make it known that even being that far away, this is a dangerous place to be. So if, you know, for me, I would invest money, maybe, you know, give people noise makers to take out with them when they walk their dogs. If they see an animal make noise, and train people how to do this. It would be a concerted effort, especially if you know there's a den in a certain area and a certain region. The neighborhoods around that, targeting those individuals that are going to be more likely to find those animals, would be a great place to target that outreach.
And then you have a bullet point, target removal of hyper-aggressive problem animals. How do we know they're hyper-aggressive? I mean, they're just...
Through experience. So an individual that is willing to approach a human, so if you're, if you're, if you see a coyote when you're walking your small dog, you can pick up your dog. If that animal continues to approach you, that's a hyper-aggressive individual. Any, they should not be approaching a human at any time, even if you have a dog. Most coyotes won't do that. Those that are still interested in that dog and are willing to approach you at the same time, that's the problem animal. And obviously, anything above that is important. I also mentioned that some people get scared when coyotes, they will follow people, and some people, that's not always aggression, though. There's a behavior called escorting, where if you're near their den site, an animal might, from a distance, sort of walk along with you, sorry, try to escort you out of the area away from its pups. So not all following behavior is always bad behavior. So that, in those cases, if you get reports of following behavior, you really, the people who take the calls really need to ask the right questions in order to see what the coyote was doing and where it was, and if it was being aggressive, or was it just sort of keeping you out of its area to keep its pups safe?
We had one where they picked the dog up, two walkers, and they were followed, quite a distance.
So, yeah, so if it was followed out of the area, that could be escorting, but if it was followed, but in a sort of getting closer and closer, that could be more aggressive. So the behavior is, you need to read the behavior, right?
Okay. And talk about reporting. So we have, Seal Beach has an app, and then we also have the new portal, and then we have people that post in Nextdoor constantly, coyote here and there.
Yeah.
And it's like, by the time you post it, they've already moved.
Yeah.
And so is there a preference to our portal, to our online app?
So that, this goes to human psychology, I think. I think, simply seeing a coyote, I would not report it. Just seeing an animal, even in the daytime, not, it's not anything abnormal. Coyotes in the wild are active at any time of the day. The coyotes here in urban areas tend to be more active at night. So seeing a coyote active at 1:00 or 2:00 in the afternoon, not totally out of the ordinary, it happens. So just a sighting from down the street, if it's just walking along, crossing the street, I wouldn't even bother reporting it. But if there's an interaction, if there's something where the coyote's doing a thing that's less, shows less fear of humans, that's more, I think is more reportable. I think, I'm not on Nextdoor, I've been able to avoid it, because I know how horrible it can be, but I've heard the stories. So things tend to get blown way out of proportion, and just seeing an animal is not the end of the world. They're out there, they're important parts of our ecosystem, they're taking out lots of pests, you don't want lots of mice and rats running around. So they're doing good things for us, but the problem animals are the ones that need to be reported. If you're, I would say, if you're in doubt, report it, but encouraging people to not overload the system with just plain sightings that weren't, you know, dangerous.
Anything else?
No.
I have a question. I live in Leisure World.
Yeah.
Where the standard-issue dog is a small, white dog.
Yes.
And so I often feel when I'm walking my dog around the neighborhood on a leash like I'm trolling for coyotes, I'm actually out there fishing for these little critters. The, I'll get to a question here in a second. I was approached at 9:30 at night. It was pitch dark out, and I had my dog out there, and this, I think it was a juvenile coyote, came bounding up like he wanted to play. It's kind of like, no, 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 I picked up my dog and I got out of there. But we see a lot of coyotes over there. It seems like their, its frequency is down right now. Is there a correlation, in your view? I mean, we have rabbits, they can eat, we do have...
Squirrels.
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 Thank you.
Fox squirrels, yeah.
Yeah. We have squirrels, they can eat them, too, and hopefully they'll leave. I haven't heard about anybody losing their puppy because of a coyote, but is there any correlation, in your view, between wild bird feeders, seed feeders, and the population of coyotes?
So, the, bird feeders are their own, you know, interesting social issue.
Right.
For the most part, their bird feeders are probably not a major cause of the problem, unless you're getting a lot of, unless the coyotes can actually access the seeds in the feeder.
Right.
If it's out of reach, then that's fine.
Right.
Or if the seeds are spilling out all over the ground around it, and they will eat the seeds and then come out of it, too. So if it's clean, and you're just getting shells that fall down, and the coyotes can't access it, you're only really attracting birds and squirrels. access it, you're only really attracting birds and squirrels, but you might get an animal that comes around and looks for a, an animal that's being attracted to it. However, if the coyotes are mainly active at night, you're not going to, the only things that are going to go after those seeds are going to be rats and mice, which you want them to kill anyway. So I don't see it as a major issue for coyotes. I have one up over my back fence as well, and I've never had, I mean, we do have coyotes over there as well, but it's not a, it's not a, I don't see it as a major issue for coyotes.
Great, okay, thank you.
Ben?
Thank you very much, that was a great presentation.
Yeah. Thank you.
Other presentation, chief? Should be, I already pulled up. You're on the left side. Thank you. All right, thank you so much, Dr. Stankwich, I appreciate you sharing your research, really interesting stuff, right?
Yeah.
And thank you for giving us the science behind coyote behaviors, especially in Seal Beach. So building on the professor's insights, I'd like to show how Seal Beach is translating that science into practical, community-based action. And I'm here tonight to discuss our coyote messaging and outreach efforts, because as you know, communication is every bit as important as our field response. So here's a roadmap for the next few minutes, this presentation is not very long, we're going to talk about the background and legal framework, just a quick overview of our coyote management plan, the outreach initiatives and the education work we've already done, and overview of the reporting portal, just a quick preview that lets residents pin sightings in real time so that we can spot trends early. So our current coyote management plan was first adopted in 2015 and is being refined this spring with the assistance of Dr. Stankwich. There's a few things that we need to update, and as the science has evolved, just a few quick changes, so look for that in the next coming weeks, we'll be sure to send that out. Like Dr. Stankwich mentioned, the California Fish and Wildlife Regulations prohibit relocating coyotes without state approval, and of course, we cannot feed any wildlife. Like we already covered, full eradication simply doesn't work, and vacant territory is quickly reoccupied, and as discussed, coyotes help control rodents, nobody likes rodents. So in our plan, we follow a three-pronged approach. First is education, enforcement of no-feeding laws, and a tiered response that escalates only when behavior becomes aggressive. Residents can also request yard audits to identify attractants, and we teach humane hazing techniques that Dr. Stankwich's lab has validated. With his help, we're in the process of updating the plan with some moderate changes, and those will be out very soon. Turning policy into practice means meeting people where they are. We've done press releases and updated our website, we created the website sealbeachca.com/coyote, where you can find out more information. The press release also creates safety tips and has an overview of our management plan. We've done social media posts, and as you know, we're very proud of the Seal Beach Police Department's presence on social media, and we've used that success on those platforms to help spread this message. You may have read my weekly column in the Sun News, the briefing room, thank you, Charles, for that, and we've covered coyote management at least a couple times. And then in addition to that, in-person engagement, including presentations and discussions at Maga PTA, and I know that Chief Henderson recently discussed this with the Chamber of Commerce and at other community events. So here's our coyote reporting portal. So rapid data equals rapid response, but what I want to point out is that the coyote management portal isn't to report immediate issues, it's to report sightings or issues with coyotes that are interacting with humans. Here's how we can report this, and we've messaged this out to the community several times. First is on the new Seal Beach City website, sealbeach.com/coyotes, where you find a wealth of other information. You can also download the My Seal Beach app, both on the Google App Store and Google Play Store. You can email us at any time at animalcontrol@sealbeachca.gov, and although that inbox is not monitored 24/7, we endeavor to have our animal control officers respond to residents within 24 hours, or also by phone by calling 562-799-4100, extension 1606. So every entry that we get, it drops a PIN, and we can map that, I'll show you that in just a second, letting us see hotspots and helping us identify if there's a den nearby or if we have sightings on trash collection days. You'll see on this map that this is a heat map of where we've received our reports so far. Since we launched this a few weeks ago, we've had 38 reports, which is not, I don't think in my opinion, a representative sample size, so because of this small number, I think it's hard to determine whether or not these are, there's actually more coyotes in the red area, or if the residents are more apt to report them that way. I think we could probably explain Leisure World based on the additional publication that's happened in the Leisure World newspaper, and I think in College Park East, we could probably attribute the increase in reports based on how active they are in Nextdoor as well. So we've analyzed the data, and based on those 38 reports, we're not seeing any significant trends, specific locations, there are residents who are reporting multiple sightings, which I think can skew some of the data, but based on our analysis of the 38, we're not seeing any specific trends, we can't point to anything like we believe there's a den in any specific area. So I want to remind the council and the public at large that for life or death or emergencies, this is a coyote actively attacking a person, call 911. For non-life or death emergencies, please call our non-emergency number, 562-594-7232, and for sightings only or routine issues dealing with animal control, please email us or call and leave us a voicemail. And with that, that concludes my presentation, and I'm happy to answer any questions that Dr. Stankwich has not already answered.
I have a question. How effective is the message been for the domestic animals, for like cats or small dogs to be indoors?
That's a great question, thank you so much, Councilman. It's hard to gauge, I don't know how we can measure how effective it is, I haven't seen any reports of animals or pets getting attacked by coyotes recently, so I'm optimistic that our message is getting out there and residents are understanding to keep their animals indoors. Here's the thing, I grew up in Malibu, and about once a year, one of our cats got killed by a coyote, so I'm definitely sympathetic to the individuals, but it's super important to keep your animals inside, especially at night.
Can, on the fencing question, our fences are lower in our neighborhoods, so we've, I've heard a couple times where people said they had them in their backyards, so they can jump the lower fence, but can they actually smell, like if your dog is in the yard, they can, they have that...
Far better than we can, yes.
Like a dog's nose, I mean, they can smell...
Cane-dog noses.
Okay, yeah, because I know a lot of people think, oh, I'll just keep my dog in the backyard, and there's been incidents, yeah. Oh, they go under?
At least six inches down.
Of course, as always, I always end every presentation that I give to the council with a photo of Yosef. All right.
Councilman?
Yes, sir.
If we have a coyote that appears to be in the aggressive category, who makes the decision to contact the state to get the permission to forcibly remove the coyote?
That's a great question, I appreciate you asking and answering. So whenever we receive a call, like there's an active issue with a coyote or any other wildlife or animal, our animal control officers are dispatched right away, they'll go out and contact that person, and then based on our animal control officer's expertise, closely working with the watch commander and myself in charge of the animal control program, then we'll make that determination, of course, with the assistance of experts like the professor here.
Any other questions? Thank you, Captain Nicholas.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you very much. Next, we have the drowning prevention month presentation, Orange County Fire Authority, Division One, Chief Covey.
Okay, Mayor, thank you, Mayor, Council, City Manager, and residents. Chief Bailey and I are standing shoulder to shoulder on this today because it's, it really affects both our departments. He did speak to us, we, our last council meeting, about beach safety, but water safety isn't just at the beach, so we're standing shoulder to shoulder tonight to talk about this. I'm also kind of standing up here a little bit upset, quite frankly, we've already had nine drownings this year. Included in that drowning, in one of the cities that OCFA serves, one of the council members' three-year-old daughter drowned. So this stuff really strikes a hole in me, and I know it does to Chief Bailey, and I appreciate your time and speaking to this. I've been asked in the past by Director/Councilmember Kamik that not always bring the doom and gloom, so I do have a little positive message in here as well, but we'll kind of continue on. So this is a quick video that, as any parent in here, some of you have seen this, some of you haven't, but it's just truly gut-wrenching as you see that little child there, removing his floaty, wandering over, you know, and how much of this, in this chain of moments here, is preventable? Right? I mean, it's just heartbreaking to watch that happen in live, live action there, it's such a powerful video. The key to that whole thing is it's preventable. The second that child was out there, should have been supervised, should have never pulled off that floaty, right? So that's the key to this whole thing, is it is preventable, and it's on us as parents and adults, that our kids are our number-one asset, right? I mean, we don't have anything greater that we love than our children, and to protect them. Just a quick summary of what the drowning is fatal and non-fatal, that seems very cold and calculated there, but the statistic that goes with that, for every fatal drowning, there's five non-fatal ones, and of those five non-fatal ones, many of them are gravely disabled. So it's much more than just the statistics that you see there. The unspoken to one is divorces. Divorces are very, very high in families that experience a drowning, right? Because one parent blames the other one, or the parent's blaming themselves, and it just destroys families. And I know Chief Henderson and his crew can reflect this, when you go to these calls, you have never heard the sound of grief in your life than you do when you go to a drowning call and hearing the family crying and screaming. It is horrible, and I pray that this will not happen, but unfortunately, it's already happened nine times this year. So these are the traditional drowning risk factors, most of you would recognize them there. One that really comes out, speaks out, and was one of the drownings we had this year, was a 16-year-old special-needs kid. So, you know, a lot of that, that group in our society doesn't have the awareness that we have, and they need to be heightened protection as well. So last year, we had 111 drownings, okay? And remind you, they can drown as short as two inches of water, especially the younger the child is, the more top-heavy they are. They'll fall headfirst into a bucket, two inches of water, and they'll drown, okay? Into a toilet, into a bathtub, it doesn't take much water. 111, which was up from 104 in 2003, and even with 2011, so it seems to be our general trend, all the way back, if you look, track to 2015, you're talking about 100 to 120 drownings a year, and every single one of these are preventable. These are the typical places that you carry, so you can see backyard pool and spa, community spa, really, two-thirds of it is in those environments. What's the commonality of those environments? Lots of people there, and very easy to get distracted in those environments. 2025, we've already had eight children, actually, a ninth just occurred, we've also had some adults as well, so it's already off to an unfortunate aggressive start as the sun has come out. Reminder that it doesn't take long, brain death occurs very quickly, and in 10 minutes, it's completely irreversible. So the ABCs of water is what we talk about, when we talk about water safety, is active adult supervision, barriers in classes, so the adult supervision piece, this is the key thing to remember, and I did bring some water watcher tags here, okay? When you do supervision, it means watching the water, okay? Not on your cell phone, not cooking hot dogs, not running to grab a drink, whoever's in charge doesn't leave the water and watches the water at all time, because it only, as you saw in that pic, that video to start, it only takes a minute. And most of the time when we go on these drownings, I've only been away for a couple minutes. It just doesn't take much. So barriers, there is in 2017, a set of requirements for barriers around the pools, that you have to have a minimum of two to be legal in owning that pool and responsible to that. So you can follow through, and I'm not going to lay it all out here trying to cut along, and Chief Joe is going to talk about this one.
So sure, ways to avoid drowning, as you see here, learn to swim is of the utmost importance, it's only behind swim near a lifeguard or swim with a water watcher. You need to teach and enforce safety rules, CPR courses that include an AED, and at the lifeguard department in Seal Beach, we've taught, I believe, 10 this last year to tennis center people, staff, the life people at Maga, so we're available to teach community CPR classes, and I think most of you have taken one from us, and we teach great classes, and that includes first aid, and then learn and practice rescue techniques. Now, that was a little scary for me because we don't want to have two victims, so the, in the aquatic world, reach, throw, don't go, or at their last thing you could do is go in, but you want to reach with an item or throw a flotation device to a victim unless you're a certified lifeguard.
The key is classes are available. Right. So again, this is all preventable, and the number-one way to prevent drowning is to learn how to swim. Secondary is supervision, certainly want to swim by a lifeguard. Pool safety, 69% of drownings age under five, 80% of drowning, child's lasting less than five minutes, just so, it's just kind of what I was talking about there. Drain safety, people forget about the drains at the bottom, those things are sucking in a lot of water with a lot of pressure, so things can get tangled in that and hold you underwater at the bottom of the pool. So don't forget about having the proper drains and educating the kids not to play around there. Nothing can replace flotation devices, and then we start getting into, Chief Joe is going to talk about some of these other additional water sources.
Okay, so drowning myths, this is an interesting one to me, you know, drowning is silent, and it's quick, and people don't fight like you see in cartoons or in movies, the one thing they may do is lean their head back, trying to get air, and then we call it climbing the ladder, so it's like a doggy paddle, it's an absolute panic, and it's silent, and they're not yelling out. So it can happen extremely fast. The top 10 tips, I'm not going to read them for you, but those top two are the most important, and, but all of them are important. Once again, drowning is the number-one cause of accidental death for children 1 to 4, so it's, it's up there, and it's an important issue. Drowning, once again, like I mentioned, is fast, silent, and preventable. Let's see, can you hit play on that one for me?
Just press forward, just press forward, it'll go.
There it goes.
So actually, this is the one I want to play right here, go to this one and play this.
Drowning, the leading cause of accidental death with kids under the age of five.
I promise I bring a positive story.
Somewhere right around the corner now, one family from Orange County is raising awareness by sharing their very scary close call, their son almost drowning at a pool party. NBC4's Hedy Chang reports, two friends, two family friends, saved his life.
Zoe and David Granados say what was supposed to be a fun pool party at a friend's house a few weeks ago turned into many parents' worst nightmare. They lost sight of their seven-year-old son Ezekiel, who didn't know how to swim.
He's here because there were angels that were brought from heaven, I believe.
The Granadoses say they and other adults kept a close eye on all the kids that afternoon, but they say their mistake was they assumed someone else would be watching him.
And we were eating, and that's when we heard commotion, I just remember looking up and seeing that it was his body that was being taken out.
The Granadoses family shared their story today at a news conference with the Orange County Fire Authority. First responders reenacting Ezekiel's near drowning as they played the 911 call from Ezekiel's rescue.
Do we know how long he was in the pool for?
We don't know, there was a bunch of people in the pool.
He's unconscious and not breathing?
About a minute after two family friends trained in CPR jumped into the pool to save Ezekiel.
Coming, coming.
So he's awake?
He's awake, yeah.
The caller tells the dispatcher Ezekiel is conscious and breathing.
Never did I expect to practice my skillset of CPR and lifeguarding training after I put it away so many years ago.
We are here to share our story in hopes that someone out there will learn from our mistakes. We failed on that day as parents, but by the grace of God, Ezekiel is standing here today. We failed on that day as parents, but by the grace of God Ezekiel is standing here today.
The Orange County Fire Authority says last year, just in Orange County alone, there were about 110 drownings. Nearly half were deadly and most of them happened in the summer months.
They're some of the most difficult calls for us for two reasons. One, they often involve children and two, they are 100% preventable.
Fire officials are stressing the ABCs of drowning prevention. Adult supervision, using barriers in and around the pool and encouraging swim classes for your kids.
Not sure how soon we're going to be going to another pool party, but when we do, he's going to be wearing a life jacket or floaties if he, you know, doesn't feel comfortable. Both his dad and I will actually be in the water with him.
In Ladera Ranch, Hedy Chang, NBC4.
So it's an amazing story for little Ezekiel, seven years old to survive. And you know, it's incredible for the parents to bring this forward and learn from their mistake as they readily admitted. Supervision, supervision, supervision. No distraction. Watch the children. They're our most prized possessions. Okay? I do have some water watcher tags with me, speaking of swag, not coyote tags, but water, water watcher tags. But you're welcome to come get one for me if you would like. OCFA has stuff up on our website. We ask that the cities partner with us and continuing this messaging on your social medias as well. And I thank you for that and I'm available for any further questions or comments, actually.
Just a couple of comments to wrap this up. So it brings a point to mind that if you're missing your child, the first thing you should do is check your pool if you have a pool or check the community pool in your area. That's the first thing you want to do. You want to be to that victim as soon as you can. And just to bring the beach into it a little bit, the United States Lifeguard Association has stats that show that if you're swimming in a lifeguarded beach, your chances of drowning or dying from drowning are one in 18 million. So it just brings back the point that swim near a lifeguard. If you're the lifeguard in your backyard pool, water watcher tags are a great idea. People, they lose focus and when you're wearing the tag, it's your job to be focused. So water watcher tags are important. Swim near a lifeguard and learn to swim are the big keys for drowning prevention. Be happy to answer any questions.
Yeah. I have a question. The years ago on my previous life, when I was in college, I was a lifeguard, city of St. Petersburg and we used to have classes for, for babies. We would teach infants how to stay alive when they're, so the mothers and the babies would come in. Are we doing that here in Seal Beach too?
So we have a mommy and me class and you know, there's different levels on, on how you teach a baby survival. And ours isn't specifically for baby survival. It's more for a mother and child enjoyment in the water, get used to the water with the, with the, with the move to eventually get into more swim lessons for self-rescue. I know there are some programs that are a little different and I've seen some results out of that where they teach babies to float on their back and reach the side and hold on the side of the pool. We don't currently teach that type of lesson.
I was amazed that kids as young as nine months, I'm going to say, I could be wrong about that, but they could, their mothers could teach them basically how to breathe, how to move, get motion and, and get toward the mom and things like that. So I mean, it's something I'm glad to hear. We're in the ballpark there anyway. I had one other thought I was going to, that's it. Just people don't realize that they can learn how to swim. They can learn how to survive. So anyway, thank you, Chief.
Any more questions? Thank you, Chief and Chief.
At this time, members of the public may address the council regarding any items within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city council pursuant to the Brown Act. The council cannot discuss or take any, take action on any items not on the agenda unless authorized by law. Matters not on the agenda may at the council's discretion be referred to the city manager and placed on a future agenda. All speakers will be limited to a period of five minutes. Speakers must address their comments only to the mayor and the entire city council and not to any individual member of the staff or audience. Any documents for review, for review should be presented to the city clerk for distribution. Speaker cards are available at the clerk's desk for those wishing to sign up to address the council, although the submission of a speaker card is not required in order to address the council. City clerk, are there any speaker cards?
There are no speaker cards, Mayor. Thank you.
Okay. Is there anyone who would like to address the council?
Hello, Honorable Mayor, Members of City Council. My name is Blake Perez. I just am here to formally introduce myself. I'm the new Public Affairs Manager with SoCal Gas covering this region of Orange County, Seal Beach, as well as a number of other cities in this area of the county. So I just wanted to introduce myself. I've met some of the staff already, know some of the council members already, but I just wanted to present myself to the community. I'm the bridge between the company and the community here. I'm very excited to, to be here. I'm a resident of Brea, but I spent many a time in my childhood coming to Seal Beach. Many fond memories enjoying this community and so I look forward to, to being part of it through this role, as well as very excited for the next neighbor, neighbor for neighbor event. I will be there as well. Any my brief comments, I just want to end, I mean, there's a lot of safety conversation happening. Of course, with the natural gas pipeline, there's a lot of safety involved. Safety is the number one priority for our company. So just a little statistic, especially this being National Preparedness Month or Safety Month, one of those two. Last year, 60% of our excavation damage occurred from people who did not call in 811 and receive a USA ticket. So talking about preventable damage, call 811, doesn't matter the depth of your property that you're digging, just call ahead because pipeline depths can change over time without it being recorded. And that can prevent, you know, major damage or disaster on your property or your neighbor's property and, you know, at the very least preventing inconvenience of your gas service being turned off for a period of time or at worst, major catastrophic damage in your community. So please dial 811 before digging and I look forward to connecting with everyone in the future and I'll leave with the clerk, city clerk with my business cards for everyone here. So, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Hi, I'm here because in San Juan Capistrano, there are plans to build or install a factory for batteries. And we've already had several beach cities that have sent letters off up to the California Energy Commission opposing this decision. And I'm here to encourage Seal Beach to do the same because as beach cities, this would affect all of us. So I would really, I'm here to let you know that that's an issue that we are dealing with in San Juan Capistrano. And I'm from San Clemente, but I still go to their meetings and I, I've even gone to Newport Beach and Dana Point to talk about this and make sure that everybody sends in letters to the California Energy Commission and let them know that we're aware.
Tell us who you are.
Oh, and by the way, I was, I really loved your presentations and I have been escorted by a coyote when I was running the hills and I did teach my child to swim, my daughter, when she was six months old.
Can you tell us your name, please?
My name is Lois McNichol.
You're from?
I'm from San Clemente.
Very good. Thank you.
Good evening. Good evening. My name is Eric Doschbach. My family and I live about 50 yards from here on Seventh Street. I'm here tonight on behalf of Seal Beach Pony Baseball. I'm a current board member and here on behalf of Seal Beach Pony Baseball, but in support of the lifeguards. We talked about some of the lifeguard techniques for lifesaving abilities in the water, but we had an incident yesterday at Maga Elementary School. We were hosting a Seal Beach All-Star Tournament and in the second inning of the game yesterday, the, the first base coach for South Bay Pony, I thought, I was watching the game, I thought he stumbled and fell and he actually had a heart attack. So in the middle of the game in front of both teams, there's 100 people out there, he went down, the coach for the team yelled to me to call 911. So I called 911, I ran over to where he was laying. Fortunately, one of the player's dads and the team was a doctor and he immediately ran down to the field. He ripped open his shirt, he started chest compressions and he asked me if we had an AED and, you know, and we didn't have one in the snack shack, but my buddy Rob Burdick, who's also on the board with me, he was smart enough to think to go to the pool. So he ran to the pool, fortunately the pool's open and it was staff with, with lifeguards and immediately three lifeguards, young kids. I mean, I don't know how old they were, but it was amazing. They came running down, AED in hand, ran to the field immediately, you know, I couldn't believe how composed they were for how young they were. I mean, I was, I was freaking out, but I mean, he was, he was, he was gone. I mean, this guy was, he was, he was gone and chest compression was going. They put the AED on, they were able to administer three shocks before, you know, we called 911 and Orange County Fire showed up, PD showed up and they were able to get three shocks in before, before the medics got there. And then when the medics got there, they brought more equipment and, and kept working on the patient and they were able to get him breathing, which was amazing. You know, his, his son was, was there, his wife was there, his other daughter was there. I mean, it was a tragic situation and they transported him to Los Al. And, but we didn't know what condition he was in, you know, he was breathing, but we didn't know if he was going to survive or whatever. So I called the coach and the coach said that, you know, he was, he was stable and the only reason he had made it was because of the dad that was doing the chest compressions and then the lifeguards that were there with the AED. They said he never would have survived otherwise. So, so anyways, yeah, it was a heavy situation and I called the coach again this morning and, and he's totally stable, he's going to survive and he's going to be dismissed from the hospital and you know, it's crazy to think that, you know, 30 hours ago, he was, he was dead and, you know, they brought him back to life and now he's at home with his wife and his kids and it's, it's really a heavy situation and I just, I'm here today to lend my support to the, you know, the lifeguards and just as a community, want to make sure that, you know, we think about, you know, the funding and the training and the staffing and, you know, it's just, it doesn't happen every day, right? But when it does happen, you know, they got to be prepared to do their job. And so with that, you know, God bless this family and the lifeguards and all you guys do, I mean, it's really cool. So thanks.
Thank you very much.
And the major kudos go to that gentleman right over there and target marine safety and the training classes that all these guys get, but they're his lifeguards and so major kudos to you as well.
Mayor, if I can. Mayor, if I can, I'd like to further highlight this story. Chief Bailey, if you can comment on this incident?
I think, I think Eric covered a lot of it. It was, you know, in lifesaving, oftentimes these are low frequency but high stress situations. And so, you know, I, I got a chance to talk with all the guards involved yesterday and debrief them a little bit and they're just incredible. They, once again, low frequency, high stress, younger people. And I think it really, it really brought out three points to me is first, we have great pool lifeguards. These, these young people just handled their business and did what they're supposed to do in a high stress situation. And the second point is, you know, they're well-trained and we, we emphasize training and especially, once again, in these low frequency, high stress situations, we hope that people, when they respond, that their training will take over. And, you know, talking to a couple of the guards, they said they were super nervous and their hands were shaking and at the same time, I've talked to some people that were there, there were former lifeguards of mine and actually there was a, another fire captain that showed up on the scene and he just commended my lifeguards for their poise and their actions and I'm, I'm super impressed. And so, once again, those, those, those are the two things. And the last one is, is thanks to the city council for supporting our citywide AED program. You know, that, I know that the AED in this instance saved a life and that's thanks to you guys for supporting that program. And I, and I think, you know, I'm, I'm hoping that the Pony League is going to get their own AED so we don't have to run over there again. And I, I've already talked to Eric here that, you know, we get a pretty good deal from our AED provider and if we can keep them all the same in the city, it's, it's a good thing. So we're going to be working with Pony League to make sure that they, they have access to an AED all the time. So, once again, those three things, great training, great lifeguards and a good AED program really saved a life.
Mayor, Chief Covey can make additional comments?
Yeah, if you don't mind, I want to highlight something in this whole success, right? And in, in American Heart Association, they call it the chain of survival. So the key was this group that was there stepping in and starting CPR. The new CPR protocols, I used to joke about CPR, American Heart would change it when they were out of books and they needed to sell some more books and they got, they reset everything. But the new CPR protocols are the best protocols I've seen in my 31 years of career. Okay? I have personally had to do it on a friend of mine on a basketball court and I saved his life. At that point, I'd been a medic for 20 years. I was questioning myself when I was doing CPR, did I need to do it on him? But he was breathing so well on his own, just from that compression focus that I bought the time, just like they did. They bought the time. They started it, the lifeguards picked it up and they bought that time for us to get there as paramedics and finish the rescue and save the life. Right? I think it was two shocks after our medics got there that they got the rhythm started and that gentleman was talking in the van before he got to the hospital. I wish all accounts were like that. OCFA does have a very high success in return of spontaneous circulation, full arrests. Our program is really good, but it takes the whole team because we can't be everywhere at every moment. Having people willing that are trained, having AEDs nearby, that gym that I was at now has an AED in it. So along with those CPR or those swim lesson classes, this is a great example. Remind everybody, go take a CPR class. You never know what kind of life you're going to save when you have that moment, but having that experience, having that training, stepping in and doing it has these type of potential outcomes.
Thank you, Chief.
Chief Bailey, what is the cost of a unit, an AED?
Well, you're really putting me on the spot here.
Oh, just roughly?
They're right around $1,500.
Okay.
And they're, they're last for 10 years and then, so we just recently, I think a year and a half ago replaced pretty much 90% of our AED fleet in town. So we have a real up-to-date program going on.
Okay. So we're getting one for the snack shack?
Well, we're going to get, hook them up with our vendor and get them a good deal and I, I think they're ready to go.
I'll fund it.
I was going to, yeah, suggest, can all of our colleagues up here, we all have discretionary, if we all put in whatever's required so we can get one in honor of the coach and?
As long as Finance Director Aronata says, okay, I'll, I'll purchase it tomorrow.
Yes.
I already have a note here to find out what that is and move it forward. So, Councilmember, thank you. That's, I'll work with each of you, I think.
Divide it between all of us and we want to get, get one over there right away.
Some of you that have money this fiscal year, so I'd like to take advantage of that if possible. I will be reaching out to you to move this forward.
In a week.
In a week. That's the goal, we can get it delivered and installed.
Use the credit card.
Yes, thank you.
Is there anyone else that would like to address the council?
And I just want to say thank you for sharing and bringing your family.
Yep.
And it's, it's wonderful news.
Thank you.
Wonderful.
Thank you. Okay. If there's no one else, by motion of the city council, this is the time to notify the public of any changes to the agenda and/or rearrange the order of the agenda. Does anyone want to pull a consent calendar item?
I would like to pull consent calendar item E. As well as, oh, H.
Not E? Or both?
E and H.
E and H, okay. And I would like to pull K.
K is not on the consent calendar.
Oh, you're right. Okay. I'll wait.
Until it is, right?
Until it is. Okay. Sorry. Okay. Never mind. Okay. So we're pulling item E and H. Oh, I'm sorry, I. Just for comment only. So you're wanting to pull item I? Yes, just comment only. Okay. So E, H and I. Okay, can I get a motion and a second to approve tonight's agenda?
Second.
Councilmember Senical?
Yes.
Councilmember Wong, how do you vote? Motion carries five votes, yes.
Thank you very much. City Attorney Gurelli, do you have anything to report?
Thank you, Mayor. I have no report tonight.
Thank you. Interim City Manager Gallegos?
Yes, Mayor, I have one item. So the city encourages residents to participate in the July 14 public hearing regarding proposed adjustments to the water and wastewater service rates. In compliance with Proposition 218, a public notice has been mailed to Seal Beach residents, our property owners, and utility customers. Residents can also view the notice on the city's website or request more information via email at utilitiesrates@sealbeachca.gov. They can also call the Public Works Department at 562-342-7389. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much. Councilman Wong, do you have any comments?
Oh, council comments? Okay.
Council comments?
Since our last June 9 council meeting, I attended the GNM Oil, I guess, workshop on Thursday, June 12, 12, at the library. I'll be frank, a lot of technical terms, that was definitely over my head. But it was still interesting, and it was still good to be there. On Friday, June 13, I attended the breakfast of Long Beach Commercial Real Estate Council. And there was that was more of an outreach to meet other brokers and to basically discuss economic development. I think it was a productive meeting, and I definitely made some contacts that I've been talking to since, right? Also, on Friday, the 13th, that morning later, I then jumped over to Leisure World. And then I was a last-second guest speaker for the Sunshine Club, right? For the Sunshine Club, they usually have, I believe last year, they had 47 speakers scheduled. They have weekly meetings. I think it's about two hours long, one hour is usually for the guest speakers, and the second hour, I guess, they discuss the guest speaker. I was reached out to, last second, their 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 guest speaker had dropped out. So I took the chance and then joined the club. I was there for about, I took, I spoke for about hour, 15 hour, 20 minutes, a lot of questions, but I think it was a very productive meeting, and it was great to see the turnout as well. On Saturday, June 14, it was a little bit of a busy, busy day. Attended the water and sewer rate study over at the firehouse. So for the open house, it was great to meet a lot of the new Leisure World, I think, board members as well as other residents. And here's some of their concerns, right? From there, I jumped over to College Park West, over at Edison Park, where we had the summer kickoff. And there, we had the picnic at the park. And I want to give a special thanks to the Lions Club for hosting and providing hot dogs and food for all the guests and for all the visiting residents. Also, I want to thank as well city staff for setting up both the bounce houses, the arts and crafts, the face painting. The turnout was terrific. I had a lot of positive reviews, comments about the event. So kudos to city staff and the Lions Club for helping make this a successful event. I also do want to give a special thanks to Seal Beach PD and city staff, especially for the protests on Saturday. I think there should be some acknowledgement that this is, for the country we're in, it's always good to have peaceful protests. And you could have 99 good protesters, and it could take one that could set a spark. And so I was very, very relieved to see that Seal Beach PD, as well as city staff, were very alert to the situation. All the protests were peaceful, and I think that says a lot about our community, right? Furthermore, on Tuesday, June 17, met with city staff and the Chamber of Commerce representatives to discuss business matters. And then, yeah, I guess that wraps it up for now. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yeah.
Councilman Kelman?
Thank you, Mayor. I attended an active shooter exercise at our city's Emergency Operations Center at our police department headquarters and where we learned different roles that we all, city council representative, as well as city staff, PD, fire, lifeguards, and so forth, how we would be handling any kind of an emergency. And this was an example that was provided. I attended the community meeting with regard to the former Arco gasoline station site. Both the state and the county were present and reviewed a lot of the, as Ben pointed out, very technical information. I did remember a little bit from organic chemistry, but that was about it. And it was it was informative in the sense that that before that the property is released for redevelopment or development, that the state and county both have to be assured that the property is clean and that will therefore give assurance to the residents and the city that the property is eligible to be redeveloped. I attended, along with Councilmember Steele, another kind of tabletop emergency response training at MODOC, the Metropolitan Water District of Orange County. And it was a presentation by, is it Vicky? Yeah. She's a natural for this kind of presentation with regard to training for managing an emergency event of a large enough scale that you have to have everybody involved in covering all of the various different departments and response modalities that you're going to be dealing with. Community meeting regarding the GNM gas station on Pacific Coast Highway, both, again, the state and the county briefed us and answered questions regarding the situation there and the the status of the the property in terms of it being declared clean or how much more work is going to need to be done. Then on the Saturday, in my role as Vice Chair of the Rivers and Mountains Conservancy, I attended two ribbon-cutting ceremonies, one in La Puente, wherever that is, and another one in Carson. It's pretty amazing with how funding, when it does occur, what it can do. The county, current county supervisor, Hilda Solis, who has this aquatic center named after her, this was a $37 million project. And, boy, I was so jealous. This is an Olympic-sized pool, incredible locker facilities, just a wonderful thing. And she was able to put most of that deal together. And then from there, I drove down to Carson to the Inell Wood Pocket Park in Carson. And it's wonderful to see what a few dollars can do for a community. In this case, it was probably $3 to $4 million in how it put a park into a community that is so desperate to have anything that's decent-looking, to be honest. And I got to run into my buddies, who are the Compton Cowboys. This is a group of equestrian riders that live in Compton. And they show up to these things, too, and they seem to have remembered me from previous ribbon-cutting ceremonies. So it was very enjoyable, very hot. And then I attended our bimonthly Rivers and Mountains Conservancy meeting, where we dole out lots of money for a lot of really good projects. And then I attended something that was that was very interesting and fun and very traditional at the John Wayne Airport, at the fire station, 33 Orange County Fire Station. They had what was called a push-in ceremony. And this is a tradition that goes back to before horses in fire stations, when, you know, you pulled the wagon out with the hoses on it and everything else, and then when you got back from the fire, you had to push it back into the station. So there's a ceremony where anytime a new piece of apparatus is put into service at a fire station, the crew pushes it in. Well, this was like a giant crane that needed some assistance by putting it in gear and backing it in. But we all got to take part in that ceremony, pushing it in. And then on last Wednesday night, I attended the Orange County Fire Authority Academy 61 graduation, which was is always interesting and what nice to see, you know, young people getting involved in the fire service. And also, you know, if you ever get a chance just to go and watch, I mean, they, after the badge pinning and all of the pomp and circumstances, they do a full demonstration, and they set fire to a whole bunch of stuff on the training ground. And they all get to jump on the engines and trucks and come on in and put out the fires and cut up cars and rappel off the big training tower. So it was, it's very enjoyable. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. I attended most of the same meetings already mentioned. I do want to mention two things. The, after the water sewer open house meetings, I had a small meeting Sunday, yesterday, with about 15 residents from different areas. And we talked through the water sewer, and I'll be corresponding with staff with some additional questions and so forth. And then lastly, I just wanted to also pick up what Councilman Wong was talking about in terms of the the protests. I want to thank the city staff because we were kept apprised. We were getting emails throughout the day. We knew about the pre-planning, all these emergency services that had been activated. We knew about the barriers. We knew about the protests, about 400 people. So as council, we were kept apprised. And again, kind of on standby in case something went bad and we had to go to EOS. I'm like, oh, my gosh.
They had to call us.
Yeah, well, well. But I think the information, the constant updates was appreciated by interim city manager temporary. But thank you for keeping us apprised.
Okay, here we go. I was at the GNM Oil meeting as well. Didn't make any sense at all. It was all technical and scientific, and it was just completely over my head. But I was there. The Seal Beach Emergency Response Tabletop Exercise that we did at Seal Beach PD, was that for a shooter?
Yes.
Active shooter situation? So we did that Tabletop Exercise. Turns out, a lot of cities around us don't do that sort of Tabletop Exercise. And this is, I think, the third Tabletop Exercise that I've been a part of. And this was for active shooter at Magaw. So we had the principal of Magaw, Wendy, was there and other people. It was fascinating, interesting. Let's see, I went to the annual ACCO C Leadership Banquet. That is the the awards banquet where they hand out awards. They had 75 awards, and I didn't get any of them, none for me. So I don't, I don't know why that is. I keep applying, but nah. And then the Thursday, the next day, the Incident Command Response 402, Joe talked about that a little bit. That was at MODOC, and it was about the water emergency response of Orange County, WROCK. And in a stressful situation, in the case of a massive something or other, I mean, this is the person who coordinates the water resources. Ironically, this WROCK is not universal sort of thing. It's an Orange County thing. And when LA was having their fires, they needed water, and they didn't know where to go to get it. And they called up Vicky, they called up Orange County, and she was instrumental in helping them manage their water issues in real time up there. And so that's her specialty, and it was very interesting. I'm not going to read the rest of this stuff. I went to the Calcivades Revenue and Taxation Committee meeting, another one of those meetings where it's mostly over my head, where people talk about things like revenue and taxation. They're talking about gas tax being replaced with some mileage taxes because people are driving electric vehicles more, and so gas tax revenues are going down at the state level. And so, I mean, that's the stuff that they talk about there. We don't take any actions, we just listen. I also attended the Older Adult Advisory Commission. I forget what that meeting was about, but it's always good to get together with colleagues. That's an educational thing. We hear about and learn about different things around the county, services for senior citizens and things like that. So if it occurs to me what it was about, I'll let you know. Water and sewer open house that Saturday at the firehouse, that was fun, particularly that one gentleman who wanted to get up in my face and tell me what he thought about the water, water and rain, water. I don't disagree with the gentleman, but, you know, he just was emphatic. OC mosquito vector, it is mosquito season. The populations are now increasing, and so be fully aware. They did a presentation on West Nile virus, and a gentleman from Newport Beach who was bitten by a mosquito that had West Nile in it, and his life completely changed. This guy's in a wheelchair now. He didn't die from it. A lot of people can die from it. But he's in a wheelchair now, and it was this, tis the season. They trap for mosquitoes around us, and they let us know in Seal Beach when they find a mosquito with West Nile virus in it. They let us know what's going on, and then they have procedures that they do to to contain that area so it doesn't spread. But for us, as normal human beings, mosquito repellent is a big honking deal. Cover your arms when you go outside. I'm sure there's several things I'm missing on that. But tis the season, and it is serious stuff out there. And then today, we went and did the active shooter exercise at Magaw School today. And I got to tell you, that was impressive. That was really impressive. We had, I'm going to say, I don't know how many fire departments were there, six, six different departments between here and Anaheim. We had three different PDs there. They did the active shooters exercise with bullets that shoot little paint things but can sting really bad. And my congratulations to to our chief, who got the headshot that took one of the perps out. So they had two perps in this exercise. They also had about 20 screaming children, you know, saying, my friend's been shot, my friend's been shot. So as they, they create this chaos atmosphere all around you. And of course, the exercise puts puts action to intent, how the police department goes in, cordons off, contains, eliminates the threat, and then they start bringing in the fire guys and the EMTs to pick up the bodies and things like that. And so it was great to be a part of that, great to see it. We should all be very, very comforted that our police department and our OCFA partners care so much about that particular school. It's kind of like the jewel in our crown here. And so they do a lot. We did the Tabletop Exercise just a couple of weeks ago, and then we did the Active Shooter Exercise today. So anyway, thank you very much, Chief, for that. It was really good. And that's all I've got to report.
Thank you very much. First of all, I would like to echo Councilmembers Wong and Senical's statements regarding the protest. Huge shout out to our city staff and to our PD. So thank you again. This Wednesday, I attended the Chamber of Commerce kickoff for the Summer Concert Series. It was Led Zeppelin, and it was amazing. It was packed. I've never seen so many people. It was, I think there was no incidents. Chief, correct me if I'm wrong. It was a great night, great music, and definitely the residents were happy. So it's every Wednesday through the summer. So I think we've got eight more concerts. And then next Wednesday is Elevation, which is U2 cover band. Then this Saturday, on June 28, from 11 to 1, is a Neighbor for Neighbor event for the Hill on Crestview and Catalina. So if you live on the hill and you'd like to attend the Neighbor for Neighbor event, please come by. Our PD will be there, the CERT team, OCFA, our police volunteers, RACs, and SoCal Gas, oh, he's gone. And the Lions Club will be cooking hot dogs. So it should be a great event. And that is it for me for now. Now we are moving on to council items, but I will be recusing myself from this item and will now turn the meeting over to Mayor Pro Tem's deal.
Is there a staff report? This is the SDR discussion, correct? Do we have a staff report for this?
Thank you, Vice Mayor. There is not a staff report for this item. It is a council item, but I can provide a brief overview. This item here is to respond to council comments from two meetings ago, which requested a little further information regarding prohibition of short-term rentals near schools. A community member had provided some suggested examples to look at for these prohibitions, and staff analyzed that list as well as sought out other communities that may have such prohibitions within their code. We found none, other than the two that are identified in the table there in front of you.
I'm supposed to have a script here.
It's okay.
Timeout. It's not on mine.
Yes, it is. Oh. Uh-huh.
Timeout. It's not online. Yes, it is. Oh, I can't find it. Okay, go ahead.
We completed our research. It's summarized in the table in the staff report, and I'm available for any questions.
That's it. Oh, I see. Yeah. And I'm supposed to turn this over to you? It says, I'm going to turn this item over to Councilman Senical. Do you have something to say?
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Just a couple of questions. So first of all, thank you for putting the table together. And the looking through it, there are no, no cities in the coastal zone that are requesting a setback for schools, if I'm reading this correctly.
That's correct.
Okay. And so when I look at, just out of curiosity, when we look at Magaw, and we look at our short term rentals, how many are in or near that school?
There are four short term rentals in the general vicinity.
Okay, four. Okay. So at this point, it is also noted that if the council did want to make an ordinance change, it would have to go to the Coastal Commission and so forth?
That's correct.
Okay. So at this point, I would like to suggest that we go ahead and do monitoring and for to have our police department just monitor for three months, maybe give us, I would suggest a report back in September for three months. And let's look at how we're doing with enforcement. Are there any issues? Is there anything else we're hearing? So I would like to make that request to have a report back in three months regarding any complaints?
We should have a discussion. That's what we should do, too.
Okay.
Before we ask them to do anything, we should have a discussion, I would think.
Okay. You want to open it to discussion, or?
Yeah.
Okay. Discussion?
Not yet. Not yet?
Not yet.
Do you want to add anything?
If I may.
Is this our, should we open this up to the public yet? Or is this not done right now?
This is not a public hearing item. It is just a council item.
So we can't hear from them? We can't?
It's 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 up to the you as the the Mayor Protem have the discretion to allow public comment. At the last time the council considered this, the council opened it up for public comment.
Right. Okay. So we can open it up for public comment. Go ahead, Ben.
Sure. Based on the staff report, I understand that the community had submitted 13 cities and one county to review as part of their examples against, I guess, STRs. Amongst those 13 cities, I believe two cities were especially recognized, those cities being Escondido and Royal Grande. Those two cities had barred STRs around, I guess, around homes with around the school districts, or school, excuse me. Unfortunately, those two examples are outside of the Coastal Commission.
Right.
And so we're in a situation where technically Seal Beach has a ban against STRs in general, outside of the coastal areas. Is that correct?
No.
Yes.
We have a ban on short term rentals?
Outside of?
Outside of the coastal zone, they are prohibited.
Inside the coastal zone, we do. Okay.
Correct.
So if somebody, for example, in College Park East wanted to have an STR, they can't have an STR?
Correct, under our current ordinance.
So currently, our our situation in Seal Beach is similar to Manhattan. And I understand the case that cited was Keene versus City of Manhattan Beach in 2022. And we're in a similar situation where STRs can be banned outside of the coastal areas. But in the situation where they are within the California Coastal Commission's jurisdiction, then we cannot have that ban. And so that is very, that is recent case law. And then so I'm going to defer there.
You're going to what?
Defer.
Defer?
Yeah.
Okay. Can I open this for public comment, please? May I?
You may.
Thank you very much. Public comment? Anybody?
Good evening, Honorable Counsel. My name is Scott Leavitt. I'm an attorney here in Seal Beach. I've been here for about 45 years. I'm almost embarrassed to say it, but I'm old. So I was retained by one of the owners here of a property in the city of Seal Beach within the Magaw School area. After some of the residents here in the city came out and during public comments in a prior city council meeting, sort of citing what they considered reasons for possibly banning short term rentals near schools. Most of those were cited reasons saying that they would lend possibly to sexual predators, pedophiles, and things like that. In the course of several weeks since that, I know members of the city council, and I myself, have looked at statistical empirical data in order to see if that was a feasible and practical reason to ban short term rentals. Because that would be the actual bar, or at least the minimum, for what the Coastal Commission would consider if the city council here in the future decided to attempt to ban short term rentals near schools. Sorry, I'm usually so loud. I don't need a microphone anyway. So I found no empirical data that ever was there an incident reported under the National Criminal Statistics in the United States of a short term rental actually being used purposefully for sexual predators because of the proximity to a school. There were two incidents that I found where short term rentals were used for sexual assault, but they actually were these people who rented the home, brought the person to the home, and then assaulted the person in a short term rental. Secondly, as many of you might know logically, of course, if there was a long term rental, there is no regulation of guests in somebody's long term rental. And then, of course, and I submitted a letter to the city clerk on Friday for distribution, where I cited a couple of statutes, both federal and state, and then a couple of recent court cases, in which the Coastal Commission definitely has restricted the restrictions in a coastal zone on short term rentals. As Coastal Commission goal, as you know, is to provide as much public access, including temporary housing, to those within a coastal zone. And therefore, the attempt to maybe limit that by the council, although I could see it would always be great to prevent even one single incident if it were to occur because of short term rentals. Without any empirical data, and without sort of a nexus, Lexus tied between that reasoning, it would be almost impossible for the Coastal Commission to approve such a ban. So those were my only comments today. My letter's pretty self explanatory and much more articulate than I am in person. But if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer any of those.
Thank you.
Can I ask a question?
Evening.
Question, has the the complaint was in the listing on the platform, they were advertising the school? Has that been removed?
Yes. And I understand that was removed almost immediately the next day after that initial meeting.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
I have a quick question. I'm sorry, to piggyback off of that. Were there also pictures of the school on that listing?
I don't know, but I believe those were gone.
Okay.
And if not, we'll ensure that those are gone.
Okay, thank you.
All right. We want nothing to. Go ahead.
I would just add, you know, we have a boardwalk where the highest concentration of of short term rentals exists and has been expanding, that is five feet to a beach, that especially during the summertime, is crowded with all kinds of children, not all of which who are immediately supervised. And I really, I don't see how banning short term rentals within a proximity of certain footage would really be any difference in terms of proximity. In addition, most of the activity, I would assume, in a short term rental, is going to be most during the summertime, when school is not in session. And granted, there are children, Pony League, and other sports activities and so forth. But I think that, you know, I'm of the mind that, yes, let's, let's be mindful, let's be watchful, let's look at data, continue to look at data. But I think that to open that can of worms in dealing with the Coastal Commission, which has never really been helpful to us in managing anything in the city, I would not want to be in favor of a buffer zone.
Okay. Tell us what you think about Coastal Commission. I've done a lot of work on this thing. I've thought about this a lot. What I find very, thank you for.
Thank you.
What I find most disturbing about this whole thing is the way it's been framed up. Like, if we vote against this zone out area, then we are voting for sexual predators. And so that, to me, is just kind of like the, when did you start, when did you stop beating your wife? You can't win that argument. But so I did my homework. I tried to figure out how child predators operate. And so I found statistics from FBI, from the national, there's a database for for missing and exploited children. So what happens with child predators is one of two things. They either groom, or they abduct. Those are the two categories. And it happens in a lot of subcategories. A lot of the, a lot of the abductions happen inside a family, like 96% of all abductions happen inside a family, or friends, or runaways. About 5% of those are actual runaways. The category of stranger abductions is the subcategory that might apply to an STR across the street from a school, as long as you're all with me here. I hope you get this. There are approximately 50 to 100 incidents of stranger abductions per year in the entire country. It's a rare, rare occurrence. If it happened in Seal Beach, I'd be shocked and surprised. But it never happens as the result of an STR stay, or an STR, presence of an STR. The the people who would be doing the abduction would would snatch the child, and then they want to get as far away from there as they possibly could, as quickly as they could. They wouldn't snatch the child and then take it across the street into an STR across the street. So that kind of eliminates all of that kind of normal activity for child predators. The the background checks on the people who are who have accounts with Airbnb and the other STR, excuse me, other platforms, are in depth enough to be able to identify child predators, because child predators are registered. They're national registries. They're wide open. Anybody can see them. So they're not going to slip through the crack in in that manner as well. The other reason I don't think it's reasonable for us to zone out across from Magaw School is that when somebody rents an STR on the platform, and I've done it many times in three different countries now, you don't know the specific address of the property that you're contracting for. They don't give you that information. They take your credit card, you book the the place, you get the confirmation, but you don't get the address until you're approaching your date, your area. And so that's when they give you the address. So if you're a child predator trying to find a STR across the street from a school, you have no way of knowing where that STR is actually physically located. So there's just, it's not a plausible argument that I'm citing with child predators because I don't want to have a zone out around Magaw School. I am not. I love our children. I love the fact that our city dotes on Magaw School with the Tabletop Exercise a couple of weeks ago, and today's active shooter situation. We dote on that school. We love our children, and we back our children. But I don't think a zone out would make any difference whatsoever to the risk to our children. And so I would like to see if we can't stop this in this. You have a motion you want to make, or?
Sure. In the letter that was provided by Mr. Levitt, there's a, on last page, says the city would be better served simply through ensuring enforcement of the current ordinance. So I would just suggest that we, or I can make a motion or just direction, that we go ahead and just look at enforcement and see how we're doing in three months, and not specific to this House in general. We have, how many STRs do we have in the coastal?
There's. Including the short term rentals that have the conditional use permits, I think we're at 44.
Forty-four. Okay.
Yeah. Plus, are there unlicensed SDRs, too?
There are some. And we do try to go through the channels of the platforms to eliminate those. But yes, they do pop up.
Chief, how many callouts have we had at the PD to a known STR incident of any sort?
So for the STR in question, we've had four, all of them very low level calls.
Four callouts?
Four calls for service. And they were all very low level, mostly noise complaints, all from the same reporting party.
Same reporting party. What we have is a neighborhood that doesn't want an STR. They are adamant, they want this thing gone, they want it to be wiped off the map. And their their campaign to do that is is tying this to child predators across the street from Magaw School. I resent that. I don't like being cornered into one of those sorts of things. But I think the callouts have been really about aggravation, or what have been the callouts?
If it pleases the council, and if I could make a suggestion, perhaps I could work with the interim city manager on this issue, and we could periodically audit the calls for service. I could report to him, and then we could decide if it would be prudent to bring it before the council.
Right. You know, since I'm disappointed they're not here tonight, because they made all this public comments and child predators, they framed this up with child predators, and yet they're not here tonight to hear the fact, at least based on my research from the FBI and the National Law Center for Child and Missing Children, and that nine other different organizations, that they're not here to hear that. So I don't have anything to add. I don't want to do anything. I suppose you could report back or something like that, but.
I just wanted to confirm that whether Patty, Councilmember Senical, was accept, was willing to accept the chief's proposal, or whether you wanted to offer a more specific direction.
I think that's fine. And again, this is just generic, looking at our STRs, and how are we doing, and.
We could do, definitely do that, Councilmember.
Yeah. Thank you.
Okay. Other than that, I'm done.
And Madam Mayor, I did just want to confirm for the record that your recusal was based on that item's possible impact on your real property interests.
Items on the consent calendar are considered to be routine and are enacted by a single motion, with the exception of items removed by council members. Can I get a motion in a second to approve the consent calendar with the exception of items pulled?
I'll second.
The mayor has seconded. Motion carries five votes, yes.
Okay, so now we are on to items removed from the consent calendar. Interim City Manager, is there a staff report for item E?
Director Lee Pellicore, Director Lee can provide a brief summary, or is available to answer questions?
Certainly. Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the city council, interim city manager, Guy Eggers. The item before you tonight is very briefly, Amendment Number Two to Accenture Infrastructure's contract, formerly known as Answer Advisory. You may have heard their names tossed around a few times, as they've been integral with our pier reconstruction due to the past damages that we have been encountering over the past few years. This particular PSA, or Professional Services Agreement, Amendment Number Two, is to increase their contract by $67,353, primarily for the pier restroom restoration, BP 2202, and the Seal Beach Pier Concrete Abutment Restoration Project, CIP BP 2201. And they have provided construction management services here, and we're trying to close out the projects with this amendment. And I am available for questions.
Councilman Wong?
Sure. I'd like to open with the questions. For the BP 2202, regarding the pier restroom restoration, in the staff report, it mentioned electrical, plumbing, low light, and stagnant airflow fixtures, as well as water and sewer. It also did comment that there was unforeseen delays during construction that prompted this renegotiation with the contractor. Can you give us some background context about were these renegotiations with the contractor that was hired?
Yeah. At this point, I'm going to ask city, city engineer Catherine Cho to speak specifically
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Yes, so at the end of the project, the, we encountered some unforeseen delays in the products that the contractor products that the contractor had ordered. Yes, so it took them a lot longer than we anticipated. Summer months were coming, they were working day and night, but unfortunately, there were just items that were out of our control. However, it did require Answer Advisory to provide additional construction management and project overview in order for them to finish the project.
Okay. Also for the BP 2302 for the pier restaurant feasibility study, I'm assuming that is no long, that portion is not, no longer moving forward?
Correct. So as, or I'm sorry, Accenture now, their involvement with BP 2302 Pier Restaurant Feasibility Study was primarily usage of that fund for the recovery of pier insurance money. They weren't conducting the feasibility study themselves.
Okay. And then also for the 2025, 2026 CIP budget, also mentions that these, the comprehensive structural analysis and phase two rehab has been included in the CIP budget. So what's the need for this particular increase now?
Certainly. So this is work that is for phase one where we did the structural evaluation, where we now understand the scope of work that needs to be done for pure, I'm sorry, phase two of the work, which includes additional beds beyond what we have already completed.
Okay. Could you discuss the difference, just for my own knowledge, the difference between the phase one and phase two that's being proposed? What's the difference between the phase one that was originally done versus the phase two now?
Certainly. The phase one of the work was the area concrete abutment that was closer more towards the pier plaza area. Phase two is further closer to the wood deck side.
Okay. And can you discuss then the $67,535 increase? That seems like a little, that seems a dramatic increase for the, for the last six months of the calendar year. Can you discuss how this amount was arrived at?
Sure. A component of it is additional surveying work and structural assessment. That was primarily for the restoration component of the, the concrete abutment restoration portion of the work. As city engineer Cho has just mentioned, that there was significant negotiations that were had with the contractor due to the delays. So that amount was also their support services.
Okay. And for the, for these preliminary structural evaluation and analysis and the surveying, do we have a ballpark, is it already budgeted for the CIP for how much it would actually cost for the pier restroom restoration as well as the concrete abutment?
Yes, that includes construction and support services.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions?
Okay, I'd like to call for a motion in a second to approve item E.
It's been moved by Councilmember Calming.
I'll second.
Seconded by Ben Wong. Go ahead and vote on your iPad, please. I got you. Councilmember still, Mayor Protim still, there you go. Motion carries five votes, yes.
Okay, thank you. Interim city manager, Guy Eggers, is there a staff report for item H?
Again, we'll have Public Works Director Lee provide a brief report.
Thank you again. The item, item number H is the reclassification for three public works position. The first one being the maintenance services supervisor, two public work superintendent, second is a water services supervisor, to the senior utility supervisor, and the third one is a water operator to a cross connection control specialist. The first two, public work superintendent and senior utility supervisor reclassification stems from the expanded scope of duties that were previously managed by one of our maintenance services supervisor. This included beach operations, buildings and facilities, streets, sewer and storm drain. Since that position has been vacated, this work and those responsibilities were redistributed to the other maintenance service, services supervisor and the water services supervisor. With these expanded responsibilities, staff is recommending the reclassification to more accurately reflect their expanded duties and level of oversight. The cross connection specialist reclassification is a result of a new state mandate where a certified cross connection specialist must be on staff, whether it be through a permanent full-time staff or a contract staff. Staff finds that reclassifying an existing water operator with the proper certifications to be operationally more efficient and cost-effective compared to hiring a full-time equivalent on staff or contracting for such services. So these three job classifications are new to the city. So in addition to authorizing the reclassification, staff is also recommending the adoption of the new job descriptions and designated on the pay scale. And to reiterate, tonight's recommended action does not include increase in overall FTEs or full-time equivalents, and on the contrary, the F, the next year's fiscal year 25, 26 budget actually reflects a FTE decrease by one compared to this current year. So this concludes my presentation. I am available for questions.
Thank you.
Sure. Let me start with the, out of the three, I don't know, titles, employees, for the water operator, the cross connection control specialist. Just to clarify, this is a state mandate for this position and it also requires a certain amount of certification. Is that correct?
That is correct. So this is a new state mandate effective that has actually been placed by July 1st of this, this year. So the two certification that are required are actually AWWA, American Water Works Association certified certifications. It's a cross connection control specialist certification and a backflow prevention assembly tester certification that this person must need.
Okay. And then the, for this cross connection control specialist, it's listed as a grade 17. What was the water operator grade at?
I will look that up. Thank you.
And while you're looking, the changes from, to, to a grade 17 from, also, I'm, I'm curious, what was that previous, I guess, salary at step one or step five?
So a water operator is currently listed at grade 12.
12, okay.
And for, I should have, let's see, a water services supervisor is currently at grade 25, and a maintenance services supervisor is also at grade 25.
And do we know what a grade 12 was previously making?
The range for a grade 12 would be, the, sorry, this is so, 64,832 as a step one, and moving across to step five, we are looking at $79,804.55. Of course, this is during the current fiscal year and does not include a COLA, COLA increase.
Okay. Sure. Fair enough. And then what is, can you help define, give some context to what is a step one, step five? How's that determined? Is there a two, three, four?
Yes, there are five steps within this classification. So step one through five, typically about a 5% difference between each step.
Okay. And for the cross connection specialist, will they be a step one or a step five?
So this cross connection specialist will be coming in at a step three.
Step three. And do we know how much that step three is at currently?
The cross connection specialist, step three, is looking at $80,322.50. Again, at the current dollar, not including any COLA increases.
Let me move on now to the water services supervisor, right? This upgrade from this to now a senior utility supervisor, grade 28A, what was, as a water services supervisor at the grade 25, what was their, what was their current salary at?
Um...
Or which grade? Or which step I should ask as well?
The current water services supervisor is already at a step five, which is 108,000.
Okay. And for this senior utility supervisor, what would they, which grade, which step would they be coming in at?
They are recommended at step three.
And how much is that at?
Senior utilities is coming in at 119.
And then, now, it's basically similar, mirrored question for the public work superintendent at the grade 25, formerly grade 25. How much were they making and at which grade? Or at which step, I should say?
The current maintenance services supervisor is at step five as well.
Step five. And do we know that salary offhand?
Oh, about 108,000.
108. And for this grade 28B, they'll come in at what step? I'm sorry?
Also step three.
Step three. And how much is that amount?
Step three annually is 120, about 123,000.
If this were to move forward as such, I understand the public work superintendent and the senior utility supervisor are also still under the union contract for the SBSPA or the Supervisors and Professional Association.
That's correct.
Is that correct? Now, if they were hypothetically to get, I guess, their pay grades approved, how does that affect the MOUs that, that's on the agenda today as far as, is that 2.5% increase going to be based on their new grades or their previous roles and pay grades?
So they would be coming in at 2.5% COLA effective 7-1 with their new classifications.
So they'll be getting 2.5% COLA increase based on their new, new classifications?
Correct.
Okay. I'm okay for now.
I have a quick question. So on page three of the staff report, it talks about the, with the implementation of expanded regulatory requirements, as you've mentioned by the state water board, the number is expected to increase significantly in the coming years. What number is increasing? Is it the regulations are increasing or more demands for certified?
Definitely all of the above. So the, I can anticipate the new regulations that are going to be coming. However, there has been increasing amount of regulatory compliance needs through the past years. For this particular cross connection specialist, they are required to actually inspect all the backflows throughout the whole city and making sure that they are in compliance. So it is quite a feat that this particular classification will be holding.
Okay. And so with the number that is expected to increase significantly in the coming years, are you anticipating at some point we're going to have to add another staff person?
As it currently stands, I can't predict what is going to be coming down from the state, so we will reevaluate and come back to council for any recommendations in the future.
Okay.
Mayor, may I have a follow-up questions? You know, I did forget to ask, that I did ask originally for the cross connection control specialist. For the senior utility supervisor, for this new potential pay grade and classification, is there new, any new additional training or certification that they have to do for this role?
Not for the senior utilities supervisor, no additional training is needed.
Are there any new additional duties or staff that they, they need to oversee that they aren't currently already doing?
They are already in an acting position with a 5% acting pay, so they are assuming that responsibility as is.
Okay. And then so for the public work superintendent, is there any new additional training or certification for this role?
Not something that they already don't have.
Are there any new additional duties or staff to oversee for this particular role?
Similarly, same thing as a water services supervisor, they have been in an acting capacity.
Okay. For this, for this item, I've, I've never done this before, but how do I make, can I propose an edit or a motion to modify the item?
How would you like to modify it?
I would like to make a modification where we move forward in approving the amendment for the pay grade and the classification for water operator for cross connection control specialists, but I would oppose the, the classification and pay grade for both public work superintendent and senior utility supervisor.
So the motion would be to approve the pay grade and classification for the cross connection specialist?
Correct.
Without the other two?
Correct.
Can, can we have discussion yet or?
Oh, sure. That's, I was, I think I was...
I was just offering an example. I don't think you made the motion.
I was curious to find out the motion, but yes, open, absolutely for discussion.
Do you want to share your thinking?
Well, yes, I do. We just had a sales tax increase for GG. We also are now facing a water and sewer increase. And then so the, the now, the situation where we're now about to, I'm sorry, give large increases for, in my opinion, for roles that they are already currently doing with no additional duties nor certification, then I don't see the justification for it at this moment.
If I may, Councilmember Wong, the intent of a 5% acting pay is temporary in nature and not intended to be permanent. These roles that they have been taking on has been for quite a few years already, and we are intending it to be permanent moving forward. So a 5% acting pay is not going to cover this permanent installation of these positions. So I do want to make sure that, that is reiterated.
And you eliminated a position and you're using the eliminated position to cover the initial steps here.
That is correct, councilperson, Councilmember Senical. So I do want to stress that there were previously two maintenance services supervisors. We are eliminating one maintenance services supervisor to help fund and offset the costs associated with this reclassification. So to the city, this is generally cost neutral. So this is not taking away from the measured GG sales tax.
So for the maintenance services supervisor, there was budgeted for two positions for a little time, and then they've been operating with one essentially, right? And so it's always been a place marker, a budget holder, right? And, but it's been unused. And so the reallocation for that budget, that placeholder, I'll be frank, I'll be direct, I feel like it's disingenuous, right? And so to eliminate that one position that never was needed and now to reallocate it for, for promotions to be, just to be transparent, without any new additional certifications or training, that from the role that they've already been currently doing, I don't find the justification to move forward.
Councilmember Wong, I do want to stress that their current role is above and beyond their current job descriptions that are noted.
How long have they been doing this role for?
So they have been doing this for approximately two years.
See. And they are part of the, they will be getting increases of both COLA as well as the, as the bonus according for the mid-manager MOUs that we already have in front of us. So I don't, I don't know. Maybe, am I not seeing something? Oh, may I ask again? Has this already been promised to these people? Has this already been communicated that this is, this is, I don't know, that, that they're already assuming that this will happen?
Councilmember Wong, if I can. There have been no promises, guarantees, and we're discussing that item tonight for your consideration or approval. Do you have a motion or is there time for additional discussion? I think we have some...
Oh, no. Absolutely. Open for discussion. Sure.
Can I ask, why, why didn't we fill that position two years ago?
Certainly, there were budgetary constraints where we weren't, we actually froze the position.
Okay. Any other comments, questions?
I'd just be curious on an item that there's no data for, but what do you feel the effects if Councilmember Wong's motion carries that, with those folks that are currently in the positions? And, and also the, the possible ramifications for the entire public works department?
Certainly, I could speculate that these two positions currently that are holding an acting role does have, there is a potential where they would like to step back into their prior, prior role as a maintenance services supervisor and a water services supervisor according to their job description. So there is a possibility that the services associated with, like we talked about, the beach, the buildings, the facilities, the sewer and the storm drain, where there will not be a supervisor to oversee those disciplines.
I mean, I can, I can speak from, from a results standpoint, that during the last few years, where we've had the budget constraints and the inability to fill positions and have to cut back, that I've seen some serious negative results in terms of what our public works department has been able to do. The effects on beach maintenance and a lot of things in that... The effects on beach maintenance, and a lot of things in that, in those areas that have suffered. And, you know, I don't know whether, I don't think we're taking that into account. We're just looking at, at numbers, but we're not looking at what are the effects of not having those people in those positions and not having the work be done that we need to have done in the city.
If I may just respond, part of discussions also was why this is, this item I was approved, or to be discussed, I should say, was the idea of the MOUs between the city of Seal Beach Midmanagement and Supervisors and Professional Association was for morale, and also to show that the city, that we do appreciate their efforts, and to basically give them the 2.5% COLA increase, as well as the $2,000 bonus as a sign of good faith to carry over us into next year. So to then stack this on top of these other roles, when there's not, again, I want to emphasize this, no additional training or certification, no additional duties or staff that they aren't already doing, then that's where my mindset's at, at least.
So if they don't, if this doesn't pass, and they remain in the supervisory position, will you then need to fill that second maintenance services supervisor spot?
Yes, we will.
So actually, they would have an extra body, an extra form of management, because it's already been budgeted, right? So that then actually would give them more bandwidth, essentially, because we would not be eliminating the second maintenance services supervisor role.
So Councilmember Wong, the June 9th adopted budget actually does reflect that there is the vacancy, or I'm sorry, the elimination of the maintenance services supervisor. So based on how we are currently operating with these two supervisors that are currently providing oversight, introducing another supervisor is quite disruptive to the operations in the department as well. We're going to have to introduce somebody to oversee all these different disciplines, and it's not necessarily more efficient and more effective. We have, our constituents have very high expectations of our projects and our deliveries. So we're, we're going to be slowing down the services in all these different areas that we are used to seeing. I don't recommend that, and we are currently asking for these two gentlemen to be working above and beyond their job descriptions. So holding off on their reclassification and then not moving forward, going to be resoliciting for a new maintenance services supervisor and trying to get them up to speed is, again, very detrimental to the department's operations.
Sure. We don't have to move forward with the second. But they are currently operating without one, and they've been operating for two years. Again, there's no new additional duties from what they're already doing, and it seems like they're doing just fine.
Can I say something? May I?
Sure.
We're talking about human beings who've been working for the city for probably, at least in one case, over 20 years. These are the people who know the pipes in the ground, they've been down there getting dirty and nasty, and middle of the night, they get called out to fix water mains in the middle of the night, and they're doing duties that are frankly above their pay grade right now. I don't want to, I would, I would hope that we would not want to offer them any measure of discouragement to look for jobs elsewhere. This is, I don't, I don't know what the net is on all of these things, but these guys know the city. They know it from underground on up, and you can't swap those guys out for a few bucks on somebody who's never worked for this city. It's, we're not dealing with dollars and cents as much as we're dealing with years and years of experience. And, you know, they, they're the ones that keep the, the undergrounds going. I'm presuming this is, right. They're the ones that keep the place going. And so I really, and they know where the trouble is, they know where the weak spots are, they know where, they know their crews, they need to encourage their crews, they need to, we need to keep people, generally speaking, on task and happy, that are valuable players. These are MVPs as far as I'm concerned. So anyway, that's, that's my two cents. I'd rather not, as opposed to, I'd rather not slice this fine, in a public setting especially, and potentially discourage people and the people that work for them. These guys are great people. I've met, met them, and they know the city from the ground up. We need them. So I'm, that's where I fall.
I understand. I, I do appreciate everything that they've done for the city, and it might appear disingenuous in how I'm saying this, or even how I'm approaching it, but this was first brought to us now. We've never had prior discussions about the dollars and cents about this position until now, so this was our only chance to discuss it.
It's true for you to say that we haven't discussed it until now, but these, these people have been working for the city for, you know, three or four iterations of city councils, so it's not like this hasn't been discussed, and this hasn't been a part of the soup, and it's, we know that these people are doing work that's above their pay grade currently. All we're trying to do is get their pay grade in line with, or get their title in line with their, where they need to be, what for the job they're already doing for us. I don't think we need to save 2% or 4% for, for the sake of, I, it just, I don't want these people to be angry or upset. I think the cost of replacing them would be tremendous on this city.
I understand. If there's no more comments, then I would like to make a motion for the cross, to approve the amendment to class, for classification plan and pay grade for the cross connection control specialist only.
And Councilmember Wong, I'm just looking at the resolution that the council would adopt. We would also, as part of that, we would have to remove references to the other two positions in sections one, two, and three of the resolution.
Okay.
Is there a second? So, I'm sorry. So the motion is to only approve, or the first motion is to approve the cross, sorry.
Cross connection control specialist.
Uh huh.
Only.
And then is there a second motion to hold over the other two, or not two, or two?
Well, I'm assuming if there's not a second, then the motion will probably just die on the floor, right? And then, I'm assuming, if I may, then we would probably-
Can I, we got to confirm, is there, that motion will die with a lack of a second. It looks like there's no second, so that motion is dead.
Fair enough.
But the council's welcome to entertain another motion, another motion to address the item.
Is there any other motion?
I'm sorry? I didn't hear you.
He's moving it.
As written.
Is there a second?
Second.
It was moved by Councilmember Calmick, and it was second by Mayor Protein, Protem Steel. Mayor Landau, how do you vote? Councilmember Calmick, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Steel, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Senical, how do you vote?
Yes.
And Councilmember Wong, how do you vote?
No.
Motion carries four to one.
Okay. Interim City Manager, is there a staff report for item I?
I believe Councilmember Senical had a couple of questions about this item.
I had a comment, but I think I'd appreciate a quick staff report.
Directly, you want to?
I.
Oh, this is the MOU. So this is actually for two of our labor groups, the Mid Manager Association, as well as the Seal Beach Professionals and Supervisors Association. The council and the groups have tentatively agreed to, three items in particular, COLA of, or, sorry, let's start with the term, a one-year term, 2.5% COLA for that one year, 2,000 stipend, as well as an extension to the class and comp compensation study, which will be completed, tentatively April 2026. And so with that, the MOUs are up for consideration, and the council can discuss this item, or make a motion to approve.
Okay. So on the class and comp study, that is already underway?
That is correct. Staff recently distributed RFP for the class and compensation study.
Okay. So it's an RFP right now?
That's correct.
And then, once it comes back in April of next year? It takes that long?
It does, actually. It may take longer than that, but that's a, that's a rough estimate. They do take a considerable amount of time.
Okay. And then maybe explain a class and comp, just-
Yeah, so the, I believe it was about seven years ago where the last class and comp took place, the city council at the time approved 12, 12 city council approved cities to compare against. We take benchmark positions and compare against those other cities with compensation and classifications. And so it does not mean that the council has to approve of any type of reclassifications or increased compensation either way. It just means now you have a benchmark to take a look at and remain competitive, while also trying to retain our hard-working employees. It's just one study. The last time we did it, seven years ago, the council did not implement the class and comp study, and so there are no guarantees that implementation will take place this time around. The council, the previous council, had decided through negotiations to include a class and comp study as part of that negotiations. This is only to extend that, because as we know, staff deals with e-burging issues and other projects, and so the labor groups have allowed an extension and requested an extension, so that is up for consideration tonight.
And then what is the cost of doing a study?
Director Smell, do you want to, just offhand?
Unfortunately, we need to wait until we receive responses to the RFPs to make that determination.
Do we have a budget for it?
We do. Actually, the council approved the revitalization funds for this item, so we do have a budget for, for this class and comp study.
Okay. And so, will that come back to council to approve?
That is correct. There's a whole process, and that's why it takes so long. So you'll likely, if it's anything like the last time around, you might see it several times. There was a little bit of back and forth, but you will certainly see it again.
So it would be approved by council to actually do the study, after you have the RFPs in, and you select someone, and we know the budget, that they're-
That's correct. We expect that the budget would be at, at the level that it would need to be approved by the city council.
Okay. Any more comments, questions? Okay. Can I get a motion in a second to approve item I?
I'll move.
Then I'll second.
Please vote on your iPads, please. Councilmember Senical? Thank you. Motion carries five votes. Yes.
Thank you. Okay. Now we are on to the public hearing. I would like to call upon Director of Public Works Lee.
Iris.
Actually, I would like to call upon City Engineer Catherine Cho to present this item. Good evening, Honorable Mayor, City Council, interim City Manager Gallegos, and members of the public. The item before you tonight is to confirm the updated bidding threshold for public works contracts, and to adjust the interim city manager's purchasing authority accordingly. Each year is required by section 10.10 of the city charter. The city reviews and updates the bidding thresholds for public works projects. This is based on the Engineering News Record Construction Cost Index published in June. This ensures that our procurement policies keep pace with inflation and changes in construction costs. In addition, per Council Policy Resolution 6384, the interim city manager's authority to approve purchases is directly linked to the same threshold. So change in the public works bidding limits results in an equal change to the interim city manager's acquisition authority. This year, the comparison between the June 2024 and the June 2025 construction indices shows a, an average increase of 2.4%. As a result, the existing threshold of $40,840 will be adjusted to $41,818. Staff recommends adoption of Resolution 7665 to reflect these changes and keep our policies in line with current economic conditions. This concludes my presentation, and I am available for comments. Thank you. Or, sorry, questions?
If I may-
Madam Mayor, I did just want to clarify that if the council adopts this item, it would apply to the, a permanent city manager, not just an interim city manager as well.
Thank you.
Thank you, City Attorney.
Councilmember Wong?
So for the 2.4% increase to now 41818, can you remind me, what was that amount from?
Last year's bidding threshold, or fiscal year 2425, is $40,840. And then the new one would be the 41818, based on the 2%. And that's based on the-
Where does that come from?
Oh, that's based on the Engineering News Record Construction Cost Indices. They publish a construction index, I believe, weekly, but based on our policy, we use the one that they use in June. So every first week of June, we obtain that indices, that construction cost index, and when we compare it between the two. From June 2023, or 2024 to 2025, the cost difference was about 2%.
If I may add to that, Councilmember Wong, it is in our city charter to use the ENR Engineering News Record June indices every year.
Okay. Thank you.
Any more questions?
No.
I have a question. So on page two of the staff report, second, excuse me, third paragraph, it talks about contracts for projects under, under this threshold of 41818 may be awarded pursuant to informal bidding procedures. What is informal bidding?
It will still be pursuant to our purchasing policy. This will allow staff under the interim city manager or city manager's authority to award the contract without council prior approval.
So informal bidding means no council approval?
No. That means the delegation of the authority will be going to the city manager.
That's what informal bidding means.
Pursuant to our purchasing policy.
Correct. If I may add, those, those informal contracts are brought to city council as well. I don't know what the formal process is. Director Aronato?
Those reports are back with the city, Madam City Clerk's-
Quarterly.
Quarterly update. And then again, informal bidding procedures will follow our policies and procedures for purchasing, so it will follow those thresholds, depending on what that guideline puts forth.
And these, these are for not emergency situations? This is routine business?
That is correct.
Okay. Any more questions or comments? Okay, I will now open the public hearing. Are there any public comments? Okay, seeing there are none, I will now close the public hearing. Any more discussion? Okay. I would like to call for a motion in a second to approve this resolution.
I'll move.
You say?
It's been moved by Councilmember Calmick and seconded by Mayor Landau. Please cast your vote on your iPad, please. Motion carries five votes, yes.
Thank you. There is no unfinished or continued business. We are moving on to new business. I'd like to call upon City Attorney Gurelli.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I think that Patrick has a quick comment.
Yes, Mayor. Mayor, council, in abundance of caution and to avoid any perception of undue influence, I am recusing myself from this item because it relates to my contract. I'll leave the room and return when the item is concluded. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you.
So as the council is aware, the city council appointed Mr. Gallegos to be the interim city manager on August 26, 2024, which doesn't seem that long ago, but is almost a year ago. And he took that office on November 1, 2024. Since that time, the city council has been meeting periodically in closed session to discuss the appointment of the permanent city manager and the terms of a contract for the city manager. At the last council meeting on June 9, the city council provided me with directions, direction to offer a proposed contract term, a contract to Mr. Gallegos. Mr. Gallegos accepted it, and therefore this is why this item has been placed on the agenda. The term, the Brown Act requires an oral summary of the terms of a local agency executive like a city manager before the city council can consider the item. So in this case, this, this is an amendment to Patrick's current agreement. The primary change, in fact, the only material change, is a change to Mr. Gallegos's annual base salary from what is currently 267,091.11 to a flat $270,000 per year. So that's an increase in his base annual salary of approximately $3,000. One other minor change is that instead of his contract currently, his contract as an assistant city manager gave the city manager discretion on when to evaluate his performance. This contract amendment will require the city council to conduct a performance evaluation of Mr. Gallegos as a city manager every January. And the contract amendment makes other minor revisions to change, like the reviewing authority and approval authority from the city manager to now the city council. And so with that, the other provisions of Mr. Gallegos's employment agreement will remain the same. Those include other compensation, his benefits, and other terms of his employment. They will not change as a part of this. So before you is a resolution to approve Amendment Number Four to Mr. Gallegos's contract. And I'm open, available for any questions.
Thank you very much. Is there any council member comments, questions?
Sure. I'd like to make a comment. For Patrick, he was appointed as interim and he became effective, what, November 1 of last year. During this time, I've had the chance to get to work with him in this brief time and get to know him. And I think the first question, I want to be transparent, is, is, was my mindset in this process? And I think I've been consistent in saying whether Patrick was the right person for this job. And absolutely, yes, he was the right person for the job. The second, where my rationale then fell, was then the terms, the contract, right? And so I'm, I'm happy to find that we've, we've come to terms. And it's basically, for the most part, an extension from the, the contract that he was given as interim. And then hopefully, as this council comes closer together, we have clear direction. And then I see very bright things for us all.
Thank you. Any more comments?
I have a comment. So first of all, in the staff report, it only refers to on page two, it only talks about the, the base salary. I think for transparency reasons, we should be also including the, the fully burdened package, that is, all the benefits, so our citizens know what the whole package looks like. I think this is deficient to only list this number. I'd also like to see in the future, instead of an amendment on amendment on amendment, and then we have a fourth amendment, that we look at having clean contracts. And so it makes, it was, it was a challenge because you had to print them all, line them up, figure out what was highlighted, what wasn't. So on a go forward, I would like to see us have just cleaner contracts. So again, the public has an easier chance to be able to read and/or comment. I would like to also state that I will be voting no, and it's simply to do with the contract. And so I think the terms haven't been, the terms are elements in the contract that I do not agree with. And for that reason, and the structural deficit that we're looking at, like to bring that-
Structural deficit.
So for that reason, for the contract terms, I'll be voting no because of the contract terms.
And I'm, just to address the fact that I agree, and the next time we update his contract, I'm happy to prepare a restated version that includes all of the amendments incorporated, incorporated into a single document. And the finance director is available to answer any questions about the terms of his contract, including other benefits and compensation.
Thank you, City Attorney. If I may comment, the increase in the fully burden rate is just right under $4,000, and his increase for the entire year is just under 3,000. So that fully burdened amount, again, just under 4,000, is, is not a substantial increase from going from interim city manager to city manager.
I'm talking about the full contract, so not just this small raise right here, what the entire contract looks like. Because we inherited a, from the prior council, we've inherited is what they had in terms of the contract.
Agreed. His terms are substantially different than the previous city managers, with deferred compensation, car allowance, phone allowance, and purse expenditures are substantially different and lower. His agreement is the same as any other executive member on the, the team here at the city of Seal Beach. So any modifications of that would be a little bit different, but his, his continued to be the same as the executive team, not as the previous city manager. It is substantially lower.
Noted.
Any other comments?
Yes, I have a comment. I think we're lucky to have Patrick. Patrick is a high caliber integrity guy. He's been in this city for 12 years, I believe, and he knows everything there is to know about this. And seeing him elevated into the CEO position of a $48 million corporation is, he's, it's achieving his rightful place. This city would be a lot worse off if we had to go outside and start searching around for other city managers and go through that search process. It would be extremely expensive and also, quite frankly, I feel unnecessary. I don't think we're going to do any better than Patrick. And he, as far as I'm, I'm concerned, he's the guy for the job. So I just want to give him a vote of confidence from me that I 100% support him as a permanent city manager.
I'll second that thought.
Thank you. I just want to clarify, so this is a continuation of his assistant city manager contract, basically, except for adding $3,000.
That's correct. I mean, it appoints him as the city manager, he will not be the assistant city manager anymore. That is another change too.
So to take away what he's already got, what he's already had as an ACM, we would have to renegotiate that, that contract down. So, so really, we, at this point, we, to take, to take away benefits, we'd have, actually have to change his contract.
That's correct. And at that point, he would receive less than the other department had, in whatever area you negotiated down from, he would be receiving less than the other department has in the city.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Okay, at this time, there's no more comments or questions? Did you second?
I mean, I will second. Your's not working.
And we have a motion?
It's been moved by Councilmember Wong and seconded by Councilmember Calmick. I will now do a roll call vote. Councilmember Wong, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Calmick, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mayor Landau, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mayor Proteem Still, how do you vote?
I vote yes.
Councilmember Senical, how do you vote?
No.
Motion carries four to one.
Thank you very much. Okay, I will now adjourn tonight's city council meeting to Monday, July-
I'm sorry, do we need to invite Patrick back?
By the time you get him-
He already left.
I think he's in his office.
He's watching on TV.
A statement or a motion that-
No. I gave my oral report before the meeting and that, it's only the title of ordinances that I read otherwise.
Yes. You know, it's been a long journey here in this city and, you know, a lot of us are, especially our executive team, it's really just an example of the work that they do out in the streets, in the office, the police department, lifeguards, fire. This just kind of exemplifies sort of our team. It's, it's hard for me to talk about myself, but first of all, I want to thank the council for having the confidence in me to take the position. That's really important that, you know, you guys took the time to be thoughtful about the choice that you wanted to make. And I can promise you that, you know, I used to live in this community a long time ago and it's kind of grown on me. And I've been here for 13 years. And, you know, and I see Charles, and I've known Charles for a long time, so, you know, I get a little emotional about some of these things. But being an employee that has lived in the city, has now worked in the city for 13 years, has been in other cities, has been in the private sector, I can tell you right now that I really love Seal Beach. I'm from a small town originally and this, this is right up my alley. And I'm excited to, to continue to do the good work along with our team. There are many things to tackle. I can, I can also promise you that I will never be perfect, but I will always work hard and I will always listen. And so thank you for giving me the chance to, to be in this position and have a good night.
Does anybody like to say anything before we adjourn? Congratulations. I will now adjourn tonight's city council meeting to Monday, July 14, 2025, at 5:30 PM to meet in closed session if deemed necessary. Thank you very much and good night.